Call to order, the April 5th meeting of the Cary Town Council. And at this time, I'll recognize Councilmember George, who will lead our ceremonial opening.
Let's stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is to adopt an agenda. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
The opposed? Motion unanimous, and we now have an agenda. We move to recognitions, reports, and presentations. Our first presentation is the Fit Cary Month proclamation, and I'll invite Greenway Chair, Jim Bustrack, to meet Councilmember Don France at the podium.
Jim got a promotion. How'd you get for showing up?
That's what I get for showing up. Good, how are you doing?
Good, good, good.
Long time no see.
Yeah, right? Well, those of you who might not know, Mr. Bustrack, he is actually our vice chair of the Parks, Recreation, Cultural Resources Advisory Board, and serves as the chair of the Greenways Committee. Does a fabulous job, and we're very thankful for him, so. It is my honor to recognize April 2018 as Fit Cary Month in the town of Cary. Whereas Cary recognizes the importance of physical activity, healthy eating, and mental wellness in the community; and whereas Cary is dedicated to offering programs and activities that promote active lifestyles to maintain good health; whereas in 2018, Fit Cary Month will focus on getting citizens fit by being outdoors, using trails and greenways, and visiting our parks, attending festivals, and connecting with nature; and whereas the American Heart Association celebrates National Walking Day to remind people about the health benefits of taking a walk; citizens are invited to join us this Saturday, April 7th, at New Hope Church Trailhead at 10:00 a.m. for a 30-minute Greenway Walk; whereas citizens are invited to the Downtown Park each Monday to get moving with activities such as line dancing, yoga, Bollywood fitness, Muscle Max, and Zumba, all of which will melt away stress, ward off diseases, and create a stronger heart to improve the quality of life for everyone in Cary. Who's not going to that, right?
I think they're all going.
They're gone.
We're there. And your councilmembers.
Whereas, on April 14th, Cary will celebrate the 40th Annual Cary Road Race, as we bring it back to downtown Cary. This year, citizens and visitors will have the opportunity to enjoy food trucks, entertainment, and other family-friendly activities. Whereas, the combination of healthy, active lifestyles and healthy eating are critical for maintaining good health and preventing disease. Healthier citizens yield long-term cost savings for our community at large. Now therefore, I, Don France, on behalf of Harold Weinberg Jr., Mayor of the Town of Cary, North Carolina, and on behalf of the entire Cary Town Council, do hereby proclaim April 2018 as Fit Cary Month in the town of Cary, North Carolina, and I encourage the entire community to become more physically active and support policies and programs that help them to do so. Proclaim this fifth day of April 2018.
And many of the things that I had noted down here, as far as some of the events, were in the proclamation, so we can shorten some of this. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, and thank you for the proclamation designated this month as Fit Cary Month. Winter weather's behind us, I think we hope, and many of us are looking forward to spending more time outdoors, whether it's in our yards, our gardens, and getting more active and perhaps shedding a few of those unwanted pounds that mysteriously appeared over the past several months. One of the things that I always think of is, what does it mean to be fit? Well, I think it varies. It's an individual thing. If any of us in here are healthy, young, professional athletes, that's one thing. I don't fall into that category. And young took me out of the category a very long time ago. But many of us are somewhere beyond that, and are either older, maybe have some chronic health problems and things of that nature, so the goals for each of us are individual. And certainly, we take that into account with our individual healthcare providers. But if you aren't doing anything to be more fit, you want to start with a realistic goal. It doesn't help you, I don't think, to start, if you don't walk or run, to say, "I'm going to do a marathon." That's probably unrealistic, and it's doomed to failure. We all know why we should be concerned about an appropriate level of fitness for us, and that's all ages. It used to be more adults, but now, of course, it's in the younger age groups as well. Most of the reasons include improved health parameters, generally feeling better, and even some of those things that may be more mundane, like our clothes fit a little better. But most of us, sometimes, if we put it off, and we can always do something about improving our fitness level by saying, "We'll start tomorrow." During Fit Cary Month, you've just heard about many of the events and activities for all ages at the various town facilities to help you reach a goal of improving fitness and wellness. And I think Mr. France mentioned the Get Moving Mondays that all of you will be attending, the National Walking Day this week, and of course, we're looking at the weather forecast for that, but a little rain isn't going to hurt us, the 40th Year of the Cary Road Race, and so forth. Other events are on the handout that I think each of you have, and it's quite an impressive list. Of course, that's for April, but if, at other times of the year, the Cary Program Guide or the Parks and Recs Program Guides, all of them, whether it's for seniors, for teens, or the general one, have many, many programs inside. As a member of the Greenway Committee, I guess I should mention a couple of things and put in a plug for the Cary Greenway System, which frankly, is quite impressive, and if you've talked to people from other parts of the country, you find out that they're quite envious of it. We have about 80 miles of greenways, and that system continues to grow. First, I think a counsel, not only to Cary Town citizens, but to council members of all of the departments who have been instrumental in envisioning, designing, obtaining the grants, which is a big part of it, funding, constructing, and maintaining the greenways, again, a big thank you for all of that. For Cary citizens, this system is a key amenity for the town and for them, and certainly facilitates improving fitness. For those who've not been on one of the greenways recently, April's a great time to start. What you need to do is obtain one of the maps, and you'll find something, if it's not near you, it should be reasonably close for you to go to. If you've been on the same greenway many, many times, I'd invite you to check out the map and find something a little farther away from you. You may find some interesting habitat or just something different for you to do. Finally, as we're outside more during April, and the upcoming sunnier and warmer months, certainly a couple of safety things, take water with you, and sun protection from too much sun and sunscreen. And many of us forget to do that sometimes and pay the consequences later. Just a little bit of a thing for the biking crowd, stay tuned for May, because that's going to be a whole host of activities for bikers. Thank you again for the proclamation, and we look forward to seeing the councilmembers Saturday morning. See you Saturday.
We'll be there.
All right. Very good. We now move to our second item under recognitions, reports, and presentations, and I'll recognize our town clerk at this time, I mean, our town attorney at this time. Sorry, Ms. Simpson.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just to announce that the town, after mediation, was able to settle a claim related to some damage to a private parking lot after a town water line ruptured. A copy of the settlement is online and is available for anyone to take a look at.
Thank you, Ms. Simpson. Okay, when we now move to the second item on the agenda, it's called Public Speaks Out. We've included instructions for speaking at Public Speaks Out on the printed agenda, and if you'd like to speak, I'd ask that you take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved, and follow the instructions on the printed agenda. Public Speaks Out speakers have three minutes each for their comments, and speakers may speak on any topic as long as it's not a public hearing, and there are five public hearings, and that is to your benefit, since public hearing speakers get five minutes instead of three. The three-minute time limit will be enforced, not to be rude, but to be fair to all of our speakers. There's a timer located on the podium to help you adhere to the three-minute time limit. When you have 30 seconds remaining, the green light will turn to yellow, and when your time has expired, the yellow light will turn into a flashing red light, and that's the point when I'll interrupt you, not trying to be rude, just trying to be fair. To have an effective and efficient Public Speaks Out item, we ask that groups have a spokesperson to speak on behalf of the group to reduce repetitive comments. And also, if you're next in line to speak, I would ask that you stand over there next to the stairway, so that we know, one, that we have other speakers, and two, so you can get down to speak sooner, because there is a one-hour time limit on Public Speaks Out. I thank everyone in the audience for understanding that this is a business meeting. Please do not applaud, make remarks from your seats, or anything else that may distract from this meeting. So now's the time for Public Speaks Out, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
My name is Joy Bunch, and I'm a resident of downtown Cary, and I'm here to speak out on behalf of the new parking deck proposed with the new downtown Cary library. I'm hoping by the end of this evening, we will be enlightened with more details about this project. I felt it was necessary to say something about the process of changing the proposed 350 space deck to a 600 space deck and its lack of transparency. All approvals, public input, have been made at the proposed 350 parking deck. So far, there is a real lack of information about the new increased design. Time and effort was taken in the current 350 design. The community bought into this design, and the rendering shows the public art facing the new downtown park. Have traffic studies been done with this increase in size? Looking at the paving plans, I was a little concerned about the turning back-up on walnut and walker and pedestrian patterns at the 350 level. Will increasing the deck and density to mixed use due to the infrastructure? What will be the height and materials of this new parking deck? Will the new parking deck design fit the Cary 2040 Plan for South Academy Street's cultural vision? A lot of time and effort was put into this Cary 2040 Plan, and the fast track of the decision has left the public with no true idea what is being planned. I am all for development and understand the reasons given for making this increase, but I also believe in following due process and being transparent. A lot of new development is occurring in these blocks, and maybe we need to step back and take a second to really look at the big picture. Do you walk these blocks every day? Because I do, and things are changing, fast. Please keep us, the community, in mind as you move forward with the design and planning of this deck. If we are building for the future, let's build for the future. That includes having the correct pieces in place when we build. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Russell Dalton, 111 Jod Per Drive. I'm speaking briefly tonight concerning the discussion item and staff recommendation for the West High Street culvert and flooding along Jod Per Drive. I moved into my home in 2002 and was aware of the potential for typical urban flooding along the stream behind my house. What I've witnessed over the last 15-plus years is increased intensity in the annual flooding events associated with very short duration but intense storms. The lack of stormwater detention upstream for much of the commercial development and residential development approved in the 80s and early 2000s, combined with past approval of building permits for our homes closer to the stream than would be allowed today, combined with a culvert that could be improved to better handle the stormwater demand, results in extreme events affecting our properties. I appreciate the town's efforts over the past 15-plus years responding to us and considering options, and very much appreciate the most recent report and recommendations that will be discussed tonight. I am in favor of the recommendation in the report for the town to purchase the two homes downstream from my house that have been affected by past storm events, and convert those lots to public open space contiguous with existing public open space. It may sound like an extreme solution to someone who has not witnessed or lived through these past events. However, in comparison to replacing the large triple-barrel concrete culvert under West High Street with something larger, which would cause more and still not completely resolve the flooding, public acquisition of the properties makes sense. This solution will reduce the amount of household chemicals and debris entering the creek and flowing to Bond Lake during extreme events, provide some additional land area to mitigate stormwater levels during extreme events for the homes that remain, and allow the residents of those two homes to move out without passing the problem to a new owner who will most certainly contact the town as soon as they see the first flood. If anyone wonders how bad it can get, I was driving home one evening in July 2016, and I was stopped by Cary police as both Cary Parkway and West High Street were under more than a foot of water. That's the worst I've seen thus far. The replacement of the culvert under West High Street won't solve that problem. Removing these two affected structures from the stream buffer will solve their problems and help mitigate future events for those of us remaining further upstream. I ask that the town reach a fair settlement with both owners to allow this to occur as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Next speaker, please.
Hello. I'm Andy Cruz, 113 Jod Per Drive, speaking somewhat to the same events that Russell was speaking to. But my only concern with the, or with the potential purchase of these properties is that if we are talking about going by tax value, that puts me in a bind. I don't want to speak for others necessarily, but I know, in my situation, I already paid $10,000 more for the house than the current tax value is. I actually called the tax office today for Wake County at some, after some suggestion to do so, to see about the potential of what they would do to increase that value, but they don't do that anyways without it being in a year that they're assessing it, which turns out to be 2020, unless there's been some sort of improvement or reduction on the property. So that's not an option. But, so, going back to what I was saying, the tax value on the house is $10,000 less than I've already paid. I did a refinance last year and got an appraisal done as part of that refinance where the value was set at $276,000, which is $31,000 more than the tax value. So my only concern being, if the town goes with this approach, that without giving more than the tax value and a fair amount, the, it may not be a solution that can be done. And really, at that point, all I would see is that it potentially just gives the town a way out without having to then deal with the problem any further, because at that point, they'd say, "Well, we offered, you didn't take." But one other point on that note, is that I'm also the, I brought one of my sons with me, but I have three sons, and I'm a single dad, and for all intents and purposes, I'm also the sole support for those guys. So to do something that negatively affects that, they're three to five years away from like college age, it's just not, you know, it has to be a feasible solution for me, too. So that's my speaking. So I hope that made sense, and I don't know if you want to copy this. I brought just the page from my appraisal that shows the value and the date and everything that was done.
If you would like, you can leave any information with the town clerk, and she'll make sure we get a copy. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I think you remember me from the last time I was here regarding Foxworth. I'm at 117 Jod Per Drive, and we get very, very-
Could you state your name, please?
I'm sorry, it's Howard Kelly.
Thank you.
We get extremely bad flooding. It's cost us thousands of dollars so far, just to try to get it fixed. And I read the report, and I understand that the thinking of taking the home down, it's hard for me to accept, but I know it has to be done. I just want to make sure that when it is done and everything is taken care of, that just like my neighbor, we're in a bind, too. We are, I'm 72, Mr. Ider's 74, now I have to go look for a new place to live. It won't be a house, it's going to be an apartment. So we're really changing our way of living, and it's really kind of upsetting, but I know it has to be done. That's why I hope you take into consideration. When I spoke to Wake County Tax Department two years ago, I think it was, two or three years ago, I sent them all that information, I don't know if you remember the information I gave you, that big, thick information? I sent that to the Wake County Tax Office, who took our tax value of our home and reduced it. And I'm pretty sure, if I remember correctly, it could have been like, maybe $211, and it went down to $195. We took out, we had to take out a second mortgage to get things done. We have no money left. I just want you to please take some of this stuff into consideration, because it would really help us, because we've been after this now for 15 years, to have this done with the town of Cary. And now that it's finally done, which I appreciate this report very much, I really hope you take into consideration all the problems we've had, and take care of us. It would be very, very appreciative. And I guess that's it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else to speak at Public Speaks Out? Seeing no one, we'll close Public Speaks Out, and we'll move to the consent agenda. Please keep in mind that the consent agenda, for everything to be approved, only takes one vote. For the benefit of people watching on TV, I'm going to take a moment to review our consent agenda items. On the consent agenda, we have approval of March 22nd, 2018 minutes, Town Code of Ordinance Amendment for Cross-Connection Control and Backflow Prevention Assemblies, Ratification of Ordinance for Urban Drive Rezoning, 17REZO7, Interlocal Agreement for Funding and Construction of the Cary Regional Library Project, Appointment to a Vacancy on the Public Art Advisory Board. Would councilmembers like any of these items pull for discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. There is a motion-
Second.
And a second. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to public hearings. Same rules apply to public hearings that apply to Public Speaks Out, with one exception. Instead of three minutes to speak, you now get five minutes to speak. Our first public hearing is for fiscal year 2019 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. Assistant Planning Director Deborah Granham will present this item, will hold the public meeting, and no action is required from council at this time.
Thank you. Good evening, council and mayor. Tonight is a public hearing that is the final step in the citizen input process for citizens to offer feedback on housing, economic, and community needs as part of our annual action plan for the CDBG funding. So what's occurred over the past several months has been community outreach from staff reaching out to the community to get citizen input, and then the next step will be for us to prepare the annual action plan. But before we do this, this is a requirement as part of the HUD program for a public hearing to be held, so that you can hear directly from the citizens. The Community Development Block Grant Program has been in place in Cary for over 15 years and has had multiple benefits to the community. We've received $8.5 million in funding, and this has helped to fund 144 individual projects. This includes 250 affordable housing units throughout the town. Funds may be used for a variety of purposes, not just housing, but also economic development and social services and public facilities. For example, here you see a photograph taken of the Dorcas Ministries' food pantry. So that's just one example of the many wonderful benefits that Cary has received as part of this program. The next steps will be for HUD to make an announcement of what the fiscal year 2019 CDBG award will be. In the past, we received $598,032, that was the fiscal year 2018 grant, so an amount of at least that is anticipated. Then Cary will prepare the annual action plan once we know what that amount is. And once that award is announced, the town will have 60 days, or until August 16th, whichever occurs first, to submit that annual action plan. So at this time, the public may now comment on housing, economic, or other community development needs for the fiscal year 2019 annual action plan, and following the public hearing, staff will be available for your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Granham. So now's the time for public hearing. Fiscal year 2019 CDBG block grant annual action plan. I would invite our first speaker forward.
Mr. Mayor, I know we look like two, but I'd like John to join me, if that's possible. Council, mayor, and Mr. Manager, my name is Tim Carr. I am a volunteer of the Carying Place, actually have been a volunteer since 1998. I served on the Properties Committee most of that time, and have been a board member as well. So I think in lieu of restating some of the statistics that we oftentimes provide you about the Carying Place, about our life skills strategies, and our providing life skills training for working homeless families with children, we are able to provide homes for them and cover their utility costs while they're in that 16-week program. What I would like to do, really, is to express to you our gratitude, on behalf of the Carying Place staff, volunteers, and the Board of Directors, our gratitude to the town, to staff and leadership, to elected officials who have provided the CDBG funding for us, and it's made it possible for us to own five properties, and then we can simultaneously house 10 families at one time. Prior to owning our property, the Carying Place was dependent upon apartments. We leased apartments, and we really could only house about five families at a time. So we began, with your support, a process in 2005 with the acquisition and renovation of a triplex, and then just about every other year since then, we've acquired a duplex. Up until last January of 2017 was when we acquired the last duplex. So these 10 units are occupied almost 100% of the year. We have short periods of time between the 16-week programs, actually going and do some cleaning and refurnish, but you can imagine that they get a good bit of use. And of course, we don't necessarily have the funds to make all of the improvements at the point that we purchase the property. We do absolutely what is necessary. So even though they are great investments, there's still a lot to be invested. So the Properties Committee, the volunteers, John and I are both part of that, as well as Justin. We are looking to be better stewards, or best stewards, shall we say, of the properties that we have, the assets we have. So we've developed a, what I call, a capital asset renewal plan, it's for replacing roofs and air conditioning and other renewal that's necessary to maintain those assets. It's a general plan of facility renewal. The resultant assessments, we worked with rebuilding together to help us to make the right kind of assessments, but that's given us now a very valuable capital planning tool and a target for creating a capital reserve over time. So our request to the town this year through the CDBG funding is really to enable us to address the priorities that are needed to maintain these transitional housing assets, really in the short term. really in the short term. We've submitted a plan that meets the highest priority items that were on that assessment that were done, including roof repair and replacement, HVAC system replacement, kitchen refurbishments or repairs, refrigerators and dishwashers and other things that are in need of replacement, and some general electric improvements. Most of the facilities that we own are more than 25 years old. So we believe that this is an organized approach to address the priorities that have been identified and to continue to provide quality, affordable housing in Cary while empowering previously homeless families and their children. And John, even though he's pretty well dressed tonight, is one of those who crawls under the sinks and fixes the toilets on a regular basis.
Yeah, I'm afraid of, I've been married 40 years and my wife and I seem like we moved into a new house about every five years and actually we live in our ninth home now. Moved to Cary 20 years ago. So I've got a lot of experience crawling under the sink and fixing toilets. Just a couple of points I want to add to, Tim, I've been part of the properties committee for a couple of years and actually worked in the properties group for about eight years since I've been associated with the Cary Place. Actually, two things I'd like to point out is the fact that our homes are somewhere around 35 years old and just like many of our homes, many of my homes that I've owned, we get surprised every once in a while and those surprises need to be taken care of quite quickly and in a costly fashion so we can keep the families in the housing that we've put them in for the four-month program. And the other thing about it is, which what's really unusual is our, I can say that our families are a very fragile group and anything that occurs to upset their life circumstances is a major catastrophe. I mean, when a toilet doesn't work, it's all hands on deck to try to get that toilet fixed because that may be the only one in the house that is working at the time. And so we need to keep these families focused on their priority. And just kind of in closing, I think that we're in the, we're asking for rehabilitation budget because we actually help rehabilitate families or help them rehabilitate themselves. So we have to rehabilitate the assets to make that possible. So thank you, town of Cary, for helping us do that and continuing to help us do that in the following years. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Next speaker for this public hearing. Anyone else to speak on CDBG action plan? I'll close the public hearing and invite council members to make comments or questions. If not, we'll move to the next hearing. Any comments or questions? Okay, very good. Our second public hearing is 5.2. It's 17A14 Atlantic Avenue Tire Land Company LLC annexation. And Senior Planner Mary Bierman will introduce the hearing and council may take action. Ms. Bierman.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is a request to annex 1.9 acres located at 3890 NC 55 Highway. It's about 550 feet south of the intersection with Marshall Carpenter Road. This property is located within Cary's ETJ and is contiguous to the existing corporate limits. The zoning district currently is office, research, and development conditional use. The request is associated with a development plan on the adjacent property that proposes a cross-access driveway easement and utility improvements that would run along the eastern boundary of the subject property adjacent to the railroad. No buildings are proposed at this time and following the public hearing, you may take action. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Bierman. Now's the time for public hearing. 17A14 Atlantic Tire Land Company LLC annexation and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions, comments, or a motion.
I'll make a motion that we move forward with 17A14 annexation.
There's a motion. Second. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Bierman. Now move to our third public hearing. It's 17REZ27 Bainbridge Cary Chapel Hill Road. Assistant Planning Director Deborah Granham will introduce the item. Council will not take action on this rezoning tonight, but it will be referred to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and later recommendation. The item will return to council at a future date. Ms. Granham.
Thank you. This is a request to rezon property located at the intersection of Chapel Hill Road and Northwest Maynard Road on approximately 16 acres. Subject property is highlighted here in yellow. And this shows the existing conditions. It is currently vacant. It was not always vacant. This is what the property looked like in the 1950s and the 1960s. So it was developed with several small houses that were built in that same time period. All of the houses have been removed. And this is another interesting photograph of what the property looked like in the early 1970s. This is the actual property and this is our senior planner, Mary Bierman, who actually lived in one of the houses shown in this photograph. So this just helps to illustrate that things in Cary have been changing over the years.
But not Mary.
But not Mary, no. Love that picture. So the existing zoning on the subject property is residential 40 and residential 20. That is the base zoning. I'd also like to point out that many years ago, back in 2007, there was a mixed-use sketch plan that was submitted for this property. So it included a combination of office, commercial, and residential uses. So that entitlement exists today on that property. It was never built, never came to fruition. The applicants come back in now, they'd like to change that plan. Because this is in a mixed-use overlay district, they've submitted MXD zoning. They're not proposing to mix the uses on this site, but rather as part of this mixed-use overlay district, they are proposing an apartment complex or multifamily residential development. This is an illustration provided by the applicant that shows the layout of the buildings, stormwater management devices, and open space on the property. A little bit more specificity here, they are looking for 259 residential multifamily units. They're looking at three-to-four-story buildings. There are some garages, transportation improvements associated with the request, and designated open space. As part of this preliminary development plan process, they also have the opportunity to ask you to consider modifications. This includes the removal of 14 champion trees on the site, some minor streetscape averaging, a parking reduction of 30% to Cary's land development ordinance standards, a waiver of an internal street connection because this is a property that fronts two thoroughfares. Our ordinance calls for an internal connection between the two thoroughfares, but staff has not raised any concerns with this because it's a residential use and it's more of a parking lot rather than a road network through the site. So that's something that we've observed is not problematic. Yet, the ordinance does require them to call that out as a requested modification. They've also asked not to be required to bury existing overhead utilities. In this case, there are some communication lines on the subject property. This shows you the location of the 14 champion trees proposed to be removed with the red circles. And then there are nine champion trees which would not be impacted by this proposed development. So the circles in green are champion trees that are either on the site or a portion of the critical root zone is on the site. Now, that's not to say that someday the railroad couldn't come in and take out a couple of the champion trees that are off the property, but the developer's not proposing reductions to buffers along those areas where the champion trees are located. This delayed the review somewhat of the preliminary development plan that came in because originally more of the trees were proposed to be removed and the applicant reworked the plan a little bit to save more of the trees. So this plan has been in review for several months as they've tried to address some of these concerns. And this shows you the position of the buildings with those remaining champion trees. The subject property is located within a commercial center and the multifamily residential use is an appropriate use. We've looked at this with a preliminary analysis and recognized that this would expand housing opportunities in this area. It would provide appropriate transitions, especially positioned in close proximity to two major roads and the railroad, and there are adequate buffers. And as I pointed out earlier, you can look at mixed use in a district like this, taking into consideration what's across the street. You've got the Lowe's Home Improvement Center and some retail uses. On the opposite side of Maynard Road, you've got a church and a bank and a future office site. To the north, there's housing, churches, and medical office buildings. So the fact that this particular parcel of land has a single use still works with the intention of a mixed-use overlay district. The site has a minor stream buffer shown on GIS maps on one corner of the property. Field determination of that will be required at the time of development plan review. There is a proposed streetside trail on the opposite side of Chapel Hill Road. And this shows you the location of the property again fronting two major thoroughfares. There is an existing Go Cary Transit fixed route along Maynard Road in close proximity to the property. There was a traffic study required. The star shows the subject property and as indicated in your staff report, the applicant has proposed several traffic mitigations associated with the subject property and access to the site. There was a community meeting, a neighborhood meeting that occurred back in October. There were only three attendees at this meeting. Questions at that pertained to what the proposed use was and what the town regulations were. There were two representatives from the North Carolina Railroad there who did not voice opposition to this, but rather wanted to share information about easements and about activity in close proximity to the railroad. Until today, staff had not heard from any other citizens. There was an article in the news in Observer and several council members and staff have been receiving inquiries about this and concerns about traffic as a result of this development. There may have been some citizens who did not realize that there was a previous entitlement, that this was just vacant land in our 40, but that's why we showed you that slide of that previous preliminary development plan. Property owners within 800 feet were notified of the public hearing and the property was posted and advertised. And this concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is present and then following the public hearing, we'll be available as will staff for your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Granham. At this time, I would invite the applicant forward for their comments.
Members of the council, Jason Barron with Morningstar Log Group here on behalf of the applicant. As always, Deborah's done a fantastic job of covering the details of our request, so I won't reiterate what she has provided, but I do want to hit on what I think are four fairly salient points related to this proposal. The first is, from a use standpoint, we believe a residential use, a multifamily residential use on this site is preferable for the site and it's also preferable for the community. And the reason why is, as Deborah mentioned, it's currently entitled for a mixture of commercial, office, and residential. We don't believe any additional commercial, either at this intersection or commercial that could theoretically be competitive to downtown, is ideal for anybody in the long run. And so we believe a residential use is preferable to that and the same is true for office in this location. As the town continues to go to market for potential employers to come to the downtown area, we believe that rooftops in a location like this will be part of what the town presents to employers as the available rooftops for future employment. And so just so you're aware, I did it on the map, although Deborah does it on her legs on a daily basis, or maybe not on a daily basis, but Deborah will walk to this intersection to have lunch, which is outstanding. But it's only a mile from where we're standing currently. And so while it might seem like it's not part of the downtown area, it's on the Maynard Loop and it's within close proximity to downtown. So we believe from a use standpoint, locating additional residential opportunities in close proximity to downtown is in the best interest of the town and serves the town's long-range policies for not only diversifying residential options, but also for continuing the tremendous experience and growth that we've had in downtown. The second point that I would like to make is that my client has been in the hopper quote-unquote on this case for a long time. This case was filed, I think it was in August of last year, and we're finally here and we're really excited to be here. And part of that delay was related to working on-site adjustments to address concerns that was raised by staff. So I do want to give kudos to my client for really kind of going back to the drawing board on multiple occasions to save trees where they could save trees. This is a site that has a lot of champion trees. And that's typical for sites where you've got single-family residential. I think that's noted in the staff report is that when you've got single-family residential, unlike, you know, a kind of just a stand of trees where oftentimes they grow on top of each other, single-family residential, you know, most of the trees are uncut and so old-school residential will have a, you know, greater number of champion trees. And so we recognize there are a lot. We're saving where we can, but we recognize that this is an area that's called for higher intensity, higher density, and some of those trees are just going to have to come down if the site is going to redevelop for anything meaningful. And that's as a result of building location, but it's also a result of the grading realities associated with the site. The site falls off fairly substantially from Chapel Hill down to the intersection of where Maynard meets the railroad right away. And so the combination of those two factors severely limits the redevelopment of this site for anything meaningful if that is going to be held. The last point that I'll make, I was made aware that folks in the community had raised concerns associated with this proposal. I was made aware of that today. We, as was noted, we had a neighborhood meeting. We did have three people there, but two were from the railroad. They really didn't have any concern. The third person lived across the street. He was a fan of what was being proposed here. And so we, up until today, we weren't aware that there was any concern in the community associated with the use. As you all are aware, I'm always more than happy to meet with folks. So if there are folks in the community who are interested in contacting me or my client, we're happy to sit down and answer questions. And so with that, we do believe this is the right use, right location. We don't believe the existing entitlement makes sense. We don't believe a combination of commercial, office, and retail along with residential makes sense and that an exclusively high-end residential community is in the best interest of the town long-term. So with that, we respectfully request you all's support for the case once we move on and appreciate you all's attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Now's the time for the public hearing for 17REZ27 Bainbridge Cary Chapel Hill Road. And I would invite the first speaker forward.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I would like to say I was unaware. I live right across-
Could you give us your name, please?
I'm sorry, I'm Patty Morales. I live right across the road from the property they're discussing next to the Raleigh Chinese Church. I would have been here had I known of the meeting for the community input in October, but that's behind us now. I have a little bit of a passionate communication to make y'all, so I apologize if it comes across that way, but I am pretty intense about this right now. I want to let you know that I appreciate the notification made to my husband and me regarding the public comment meeting. I am disappointed that others in the community directly behind us who will be impacted do not receive the same notification of the meeting tonight because they will be impacted if a rezoning change is made. I made copies of our notification in Cary to them and nobody was aware that I spoke to this meeting tonight. Historically, and I'm going to explain why this bothers me, it's because of the construction right next to us and surrounding our little community. Historically, local construction surrounding our neighborhood has caused actual physical damage to multiple home sites due to inadequate protections installed by the new construction. I don't know if this is a permitting deficiency. Shortcuts taken by the developers or inadequate construction oversight by the town, but it is a very real problem for those of us who live there. Due to the first phase of the development of the Raleigh Chinese Church, several of my neighbors experienced significant flooding of their property, which caused literally thousands of dollars each to repair and which came out of their own pockets. They were not reimbursed by the church, the town, or the construction company. The second phase of that particular development, which is currently in progress and immediately adjacent to my husband's and my property, has resulted in more erosion to our property in the last year and a half than we experienced in the entire 21 and a half years preceding. A runoff ditch that coursed through our backyard was no more than four feet wide at its head where it met our neighboring property line. It has eroded to about 12 feet in width and has deepened to the point that it's uncovered the root systems of several very large trees that are now in increasing danger of dying or falling over during high winds. The surge during significant rain caused by the excessive runoff due to the ineffective protections has also been high enough and strong enough to move our fencing, causing multiple repairs and costs for us already. Additionally, the current construction left zero buffer at the property line. I know we talk about buffers being required, but understand this is what we're seeing in place right now at our homes. I came home from work one day to find they had cleared every living plant up to the fence line and dug a trench right at the line to direct flow onto our property rather than create an acceptable manner to deal with it on their own. They've modified acres of woods, lawn, and pasture to an elevated by about 10 or more feet- feet, primarily paved area, diverting massive water flow onto our property that would have previously been absorbed into the ground on their side of the line. I called the town of Cary and had someone come out at least three times to talk to-- and the individual who came out told me I had no recourse and was legally required to accept all this water onto my property that was as a result of the adjacent construction. So, that avenue proved to be completely useless. I subsequently called the stormwater runoff department, and quite honestly, that may be the reason that it appears they're now digging the retention pond deeper. But even with that, they've done additional work on the pond, and multiple times when they do the work, they pump the water out with a high-pressure, high-volume pump directly onto our property, and it floods our backyard approximately a fourth to a third acre to an inch thick, and makes it into a mud pit. Sorry. I do have pictures of a lot of this. And I have a question about perking requirements. I haven't seen any of the cutouts to see of the soil perks and should be allowing this construction. The topography changes resulting from the surrounding construction we've already experienced has effectively created a giant bowl with our neighborhood being at the bottom and receiving inadequately controlled stormwater runoff. The subject property may be across the road, but is also at a higher elevation, and the proposed rezoning to higher density would only exacerbate the property damage we already experienced from the local construction completed or in progress. Please don't say you use the 100-year flood data to determine appropriate protections. It's already been proven that that standard is no longer sound. It's not simply that the climate has changed and weather is more extreme, although that is true. Previously-approved construction has completely altered the topography and negatively affected natural water flow and absorption in the area.
Ms. Morales, I'm sorry to have to interrupt you, but your time has expired.
Okay.
If you have additional comments you would like for us to see, you can leave them with the town clerk, and she'll make sure we get a copy.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. No, 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 no. No applauding, please.
I live at 121 Woodland Drive in Budell Acres. I knew nothing about this meeting. I didn't get any notice. I didn't get the notice that was referred to earlier, because I don't live within 800 feet of that property, but I live very close to it. The reason I'm here, I have concerns about the traffic on Highway 54 and the traffic that's already picked up through Budell Acres from the two churches that are new, that have been built in our neighborhood. The Raleigh Chinese Christian Church and the, I guess it's an AME church. And people who don't live in our community drive through Lake and Woodland Drive at high speeds. We have children playing. We have a 25 mile-per-hour speed limit, but I've seen cars going easily 45, 50 miles an hour down our neighborhood. So, to pick up where Patty left off, when the development of the properties at the intersection Chapel Hill and Maynard was first proposed and opened for public meeting years ago, the plan presented included greenways, and to date, those have failed to appear. And there's very little historical basis to indicate that any unforced action taken making current residents a priority consideration when new projects are proposed. Plans are presented and then are revised in the progress to the advantage of the developer and to the detriment of the nearby residents. Construction around her house and our community has decreased our personal enjoyment of our property. When the plans for the Raleigh Chinese Christian Church were made, there was supposed to be a place for the stormwater runoff, a holding pond. Dan Clinton of your staff is aware of the problem. Our neighbor, the Abises, Sally Abises, is sitting back here, noticed after they dug the pond, the developer pushed dirt that was left into the pond. So, it never was as big as it was supposed to be, but Dan said nothing could be done about that. The end result was, water from that holding pond ran through the Abises yard and flooded their yard. They complained, and the solution by the town of Cary was to put a larger drainage pipe under Woodland Drive from the Abises property to my property, at which time I told Dan Clinton, "You're just changing the problem from his house to my house." I was ignored. Within six months after that was done, my entire gravel driveway washed into my yard because we had one of those, another one of those 100-year floods. So, I had to hire a landscaper. I called Dan, and he and one of his assistants came to the house and just shook their head and said, "Well, it's too bad. This is private property. We can't do anything about it." The creek that ran beside my property, I've lived there for 46 years, had never flooded until the Raleigh Chinese Christian Church development was put in, because all that land that used to percolate is now asphalt. And I don't care what Dan says, the town didn't properly design the flow of water from that land. The end result was, I had to pay a landscaper. I asked him, "What should I do?" He said, "Well, hire a landscaper." So, I did. I looked it up today. I paid that landscaper over $5,600 to put in railroad ties down the creek so that when it floods, it'll hold the water in the creek until it's beyond my house. It still may go across the back part of my yard, but at least it won't wash my driveway out into the yard. So, the picture that was shown here earlier for the runoff for this new construction was up there for at least five seconds. In that five seconds, I could see that the water, it looked to me like it's being channeled under Highway 54 into our community.
Mr. Hall, I'm sorry I have to interrupt you, but your time has expired. If you have additional comments, please leave them with the town clerk.
That's the main thing. Be aware of what you're doing to those of us who live in the community.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Excuse my voice, please, fighting a bit of a cold. My name is Sarah Williams. I live in the Northwoods neighborhood of Cary, and my family's lived there over 11 years. We love Cary. I am also here on behalf of several families. This is spring break in Wake County, and unfortunately, several of my neighbors that would like to be here are not, so you get me instead. So, we have two primary pieces of input that we'd like to share. For anyone who's been at this intersection, and as Ms. Grant mentioned, it is at the intersection of two main thoroughfares, on Chapel Hill Road and on Maynard. There is a development going in a bit farther down on Chapel Hill with some townhomes and single-family homes. Anyone who's been at these intersections between 8 and 10, or 4:30 and 6, knows that they back up like crazy. And so, if we're going to exacerbate the problem with another, call it 300 to 500 cars from a 250-unit apartment building, that's going to be a big problem for the neighborhood. So, we'd urge you to consider that. The second thing is that we took a look at vacancies within about a three-mile radius, and there's over 900 vacancies in apartment buildings at this time. So, we really don't feel that the need is there. There are vacancies in all price ranges. We had a look at that, both apartment buildings, single-family homes, and multifamily units. So, these pieces we'd urge you to consider as this rezoning request is presented to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Mary Mollander. I live at 113 Buckhurst Drive, which is right behind the Lowes at that intersection. It is more than 800 feet away, so I did not learn of this effort until today, actually. I've been a Cary resident for 33 years. I'm thankful to be here tonight, because I have always been very impressed with how the town council works with citizens. I've lived very close to the intersection we're discussing for the past 25 years. I'm a walker. I walk that intersection virtually every day. It's already a very big, very busy intersection. Folks, Chapel Hill Road is already woefully inadequate for the current traffic, especially during rush hour and school start-and-stop times. Speaking of schools, consider the current crowding already. Northwoods and Weatherstone Elementary and West Cary Middle already have trailers. You can't add them to Kingswood, because it's already landlocked. There are three new neighborhoods being built on Chapel Hill Road between Maynard and Cary Parkway right now, all high-density. We need to adjust to their impact on the nearby roads, schools, water, and sewer first before rushing to add that many more people to this small area we're talking about tonight. This section of Cary has almost lost the small-town feel that is so valuable. This corridor is the gateway to the fabulous new downtown Cary that we all want. Council already approved a storage facility on this very gateway, detracting, in my opinion, from the quickly eroding neighborhood aspect that we treasure. Please do not allow the rezoning of this land for such a high-density project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is Charles Persons. I represent the developer, the Bainbridge Companies. We're located at 401 Harrison Oaks Boulevard here in Cary. Wanted to address the concerns of the first two speakers this evening on our rezoning, and particularly address their stormwater concerns. If you take a look at our site plan, you will see we have two stormwater control measures, one located at the west of the property and the other located at the south. Topography of our site will dictate that the water will naturally flow south and to the west towards the railroad tracks. So, we do not anticipate any water flowing across the street into the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for this public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions or comments. We're not making a decision on this tonight. Instead, it will go to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation. If there are any changes between now and the Planning and Zoning Board, it's likely that this will take even a longer time. As Mr. Barron stated, he's open and willing to meet with residents, and he's done that in the past, so I take him at his word. And I would urge everyone who has any concerns to contact Mr. Barron before you leave, and make sure that you set up a meeting with Mr. Barron and other representatives. And having said that, I'll open it up to council members for other questions and comments.
I have a quick question with respect to what's already approved in the site plan. The Maynard Village mixed-use sketch plan, what's the difference between the density and the traffic issues of what's already been approved, what they can build by right?
I will get that information for you. I don't have the specific information, but as you see here, it was a mix of commercial use, office use, and residential use. So, commercial and office are typically higher trip generators. But we'll get some specific information. This was a 10-year-old plan, so I'll do some digging and get that for you.
Great, thank you.
And when you do that, I mean, I think we have to contemplate also the type of office, because if you have, let's say, medical office that only has office hours from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00, that's not going to exacerbate the morning rush hour problem that we have. You know, if you have people that you're pulling in from the north coming into the site because it's office, it may not be a problem, because most of the traffic in the morning is going the other direction. So, just, you know, we'd like to have a really measured perspective on this. One thing that I see that we have as a council member, council members now, is that before, when we considered a rezoning, we considered the requested zoning category, we considered what it was zoned before, and we contemplated what the land use plan told us ought to be there. And so, we looked at that rezoning request in light of the land use plan and put it into context. We don't have that now, because of the Cary community plan. We have a much more open-ended and broad interpretation of what can go there. And that demands upon us, for us to look holistically at the community and say, "What is the right fit for this community?", and go beyond just comparing what the land is currently zoned for or entitled for and what is being asked of us. I think it demands us to step back and say, "What's the right use for this land overall, and is this the right use?"
Other questions or comments?
I mean, I would suggest that that's something that's council does every time we sit at this table, is compare it to what it's already zoned for and what the requested zoning is and is it the right fit for the community. I think all of us do that, you know, day in, day out. You know, unfortunately, the land is already entitled for a fairly high-density, commercial, mixed-use site. You know, they would like to do something different. So, I'm looking at it as, what's proposed today, is that better than what could be built today? So, and I don't know that I know what the answer is. I did hear a lot tonight that was very concerning to me, that wasn't really necessarily related to this specific proposal, but has obviously left a very bad taste in area residents' mouths regarding another development and the impacts that that is having on their properties. And that is something that I would like to know more about, because, you know, historically, you know, especially with today's stormwater runoff requirements and standards that we have in place, some of the stories that we heard tonight should not be happening. Now, I don't know exactly when the Chinese Church was approved or what standards they had to develop under, but I would really encourage our staff to take a second look at what's been done and the impact that's had on area residents, because that's typically not, that's not how we do business today. It's not how we've done business at least the last five, 10 years that I've been here. So, that's concerning to me. Some of the stories about people's yards and driveways washing away, and it's not right. It should not be happening. And if something's been done wrong, it needs corrected. I get the concerns regarding traffic. I really do. Frequent this area often. It's the Lowes I go to five times a week. You know, very close to our business and such, and I've got friends that live over here. So, I'm in the area pretty often. And yeah, it's, as I think the one speaker said, you know, 8 to 10 and 4 to 6, it's bad. It's bad. You know, unfortunately, it's a state road, and for years, we've been trying to work with the state to get the road improved and have not been successful to date. So, it's something that we're continuing to work on. It's something that we recognize. Widening Chapel Hill Road would probably be the most expensive road widening that Cary has ever undertaken, given the right-of-way acquisition costs and those things involved. But that is not an excuse for, you know, punting it down the road. So, I want to learn more. I will say, residential use, if traffic's your concern, is going to be less of a traffic generator than a commercial office residential project. It is. But anything that gets developed on this site is going to add traffic to the roads. It's just reality. So, I want to learn more as this goes through the process. I would echo the mayor's comments of residents to continue to work with the applicant. I think Mr. Barron has, as he stated earlier, that, you know, this was the first time he had really heard any concerns. I would apologize for those people that maybe weren't notified that live very close to this. You know, unfortunately, the law is what the law is. We notify people within 800 feet.
Actually, it's like double.
Yeah. Actually, state law requires 400 feet. We go above and beyond at 800. And maybe there's cases we should go 1,200, 1,400. You know, it's, but you have to, you know, put a number down there and treat everybody the same, so. you know, put a number down there and treat everybody the same. So, those that didn't know about this until the article in the newspaper, I do apologize. I guess those are my comments.
Other comments?
I've got a question. So, if the road improvements, there were some road improvements talked about, this part is what we voted to be six-lane. So, if roads, if this were improved, they'd have to do a six-lane cross-section on their half, is that correct?
They would have to do their portion of the road on their property frontage on their half, correct?
Okay, that's a question. And then, I think the direction of the water got addressed because I've driven there too. I didn't think the water would run uphill across the road by the eye doctor to go into the neighborhood. I think it was going to go toward the railroad because the railroad seems to be the lowest spot, so I believe that's understood. Another question is that, in closing comments, I don't know, I heard the words "high-end" thrown out about this development, and I'm not sure those are words that we're supposed to use or consider, I don't know what that means.
We're not supposed to contemplate that.
Yeah, so I don't know what that means, and I don't know why that's even...
Unless it's a condition.
I saw no, I see no conditions about high-end, and I don't know what that means.
High-end is a subjective concept.
Yep, exactly right.
So, they can put conditions in about the amount of masonry or...
Garages.
The amenity package maybe, I don't know if they can do that. But, you know, they can do, they can condition elements that might suggest that it'd be high-end, but they can't tell us it's high-end or tell, put a condition for high-end. All right, I'd like to, go ahead, I'd like to...
No, go ahead, those are mine.
I'd like to just address the confusion around the stormwater, and maybe staff can address it a little bit, too. My understanding is our ordinance is stronger than the state's ordinance is for stormwater detention, and our standard is that we cannot put more water in, allow more runoff than presently exists in an undeveloped condition for a 10-year...
They have to mitigate to pre-existing conditions.
For a 10-year storm.
I'm going to ask for one of our stormwater engineers to verify that. I believe you're correct, but either Mr. Clinton or Lee can speak to that.
Hi, Dan Clinton. We have a two-, five- and 10-year detention policy, so yes, we can't discharge more before
or after construction than before.
Okay, so I think that's where our level of confusion is, is because we often omit that 10-year component when we talk about it. We often say, oh, well, we can't, a developer can't have more runoff than presently exists in the existing conditions, but that's only for a 10-year storm. So, when you get a huge storm, like a 50 or 100 or whatever they call, you know, that July 2016 event.
Millennial.
Yeah, millennial event. It's going to put more runoff than the people ever saw before, and we don't have an ordinance that can address that or that does address that. And it's, to your point, Mr. France, we have a standard for notification that's better than the state's required notification. We have stormwater standards that are higher than the state's stormwater standards, but it's not enough. It's, what we do is not enough, and citizens often feel like they're on the wrong end of that. So, it's, it's a terrible condition for us to be in because I agree, we should be aware of what we're doing to the existing homeowners.
And the other question I remember now about was about the stormwater runoff is that I thought that with the runoff and detention ponds, that you could let water with, was it turbidity? Go, I'm going a little bit colored, they can have color in it, but if silt and mud is being dumped in a neighboring lot, is that, even if it's a 25 or 100-year flood, we don't protect against silt and mud being dumped in the neighbor's yards?
We do, we do protect. We have erosion control inspectors that go out very frequently. If there's off-site sediment, we have the ability to issue fines for that, and we have and will continue to.
So, it, so then if water, clear water or colored water but not full of silt or mud solids were discharged, that would be acceptable because it might be a 25-year or 50-year flood or 100-year flood? But if silt and mud is discharged anytime, that's not acceptable, is that what I'm, is...
That is, that is correct.
And it sounds like we've had silt and mud that's been deposited in neighbor's yards.
We can, we can go back and look at the inspection reports and see.
All right, I'd like, I'd like to see that. That's a little different than just water. If we're dumping dirt in somebody's yard, that's a little bit different than water.
Other questions or comments?
Yeah, I'd be real interested to see some comparisons between what was approved back in 2007 and, you know, what we have here. That would really help me because when I, something's going to, this corner's not going to stay vacant forever, something's going to go here. When I saw mixed-use zoning, I kind of got excited. I was expecting something closer to what we had in 2007, and frankly, was disappointed when I found out it was just going to be apartments. Now, there may be some pros to that, just being apartments, maybe less traffic for apartments. So, I'd like to see those numbers. I'd like to get over my disappointment of 250 more apartments on the edge of a part of town that already has an abundance of apartments. It doesn't, doesn't make sense to me. Mr. Barron's made a compelling argument why it's important to have residential, and I'm happy that he made that, I'm listening to that. But I'm still disappointed over the fact that we have, this corner is going to have 250 apartments. As far as the conditions are, the modification requests, they all seem to make sense. Of course, surprise, surprise, the champion tree one is a little concern to me. I know you've worked very hard on that. I would love to see even more work get done, that we could save a couple more champion trees. That would, that would be very hap, make me very happy if this thing moves forward. And I got to mention also, that we haven't mentioned up to now, is that this property on the western border abuts the property that contains the Nancy Jones House, which is Cary's oldest documented house. And whatever goes here, whether it's this or something else, really needs to respect that. Looking at the preliminary development plan, it looks like the closest thing to that western border is a stormwater detention facility. And that may be great, it looks like it's going to be tiered or stepped, and maybe, maybe I'm being overly optimistic, but that could maybe be a very good thing to go next to that border, you know, rather than a wall of an apartment building. So, we might be okay there. But in case I'm not looking at that right, extra buffering would be helpful as well. But I would like to see those numbers to compare, and I think that would be something that would be helpful when Mr. Barron meets with the residents also, to have that information.
Since we're all putting our wish lists in, it's probably not a surprise to Mr. Barron that I'll be asking a lot of questions about pedestrian safety and bike safety. This intersection is, since I ride my elf on that green, part of the greenway a lot and I walk it a lot, it is very dangerous. It has a right turn, extra lane, and people never, they slow down, they don't stop. So, whatever's there, people will go from this property across to Starbucks, they just will. Or to the place probably where Deborah had lunch, right? So, there is no crosswalk across Maynard there on this side, there's a cross on the other side, there's two greenways on the other side that are very frequent, frequented, the Black Creek Greenway that goes to Gobel Park, and then obviously the schools. Anyone who may potentially live here, whether it's in the current site plan or later, it is less than probably a quarter mile to the school from there. So, it definitely needs additional pedestrian safety.
Any other questions, comments? Yeah, I'm, I'm... I think, I think Mr. Yurhau's point about, I want to see the balance between the previous one and that, to kind of weigh that. And, you know, maybe it's a little bit inappropriate, but it sure wears thin when I keep hearing the high-end, and I don't want to beat that dead horse. But this is an area that now, using Mr. Barron's argument, is really on the outskirts of downtown and merits maybe this type of density. But it is, to look at and to look at the concept and look at the conditions already made, in my perspective, it's very underwhelming. There's just nothing here that encourages me to think that these 259 units are going to be that shining star that we want to help bring that area up and enhance that area that comes into town. It just, it just is so underwhelming. A little U, a little L, nothing in the conditions that reminds me or encourages me to think this really is going to be something special. To me, it looks like the most we can squeeze in, we're going to do it, and it's, you know, the only saving grace might be if the impervious surface or all the other things compared to that mixed use balance it out. But I don't think this is, you know, using your argument about we have to look at the whole picture, I think this is just very, at this point, very underwhelming. Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll ask one very difficult question to our town attorney. One speaker spoke of making sure there were enough school seats and making sure there was adequacy on roads. That's describing what we used to have in place called adequate public facilities ordinances, which the court said, you know, you really can't do that. But then again, on rezonings, we really don't have to state certain reasons, and kind of we, kind of we do. My question is, if our only reasons were roads and school, roads and, or schools and traffic, would that put us at some legal risk since that's basically an adequate public facilities ordinance?
But it really isn't, Mayor. Those are the kind of things that you consider with a rezoning, the density and the use of the land, and you consider the infrastructure that's available to service it. So, I don't think that that would be something you couldn't do.
Okay, very good. Want to make sure. Any other questions, comments? All right, this will go to the Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation. We'll see this at least in a couple of months, if not longer. So, thank you, Ms. Granin.
You're welcome.
We now move to our fourth public hearing, 17 RZ30 Cary Medical Park. Senior Planner Kevin Hales will introduce the item. Council will not take action tonight, but it will be referred to the Planning and Zoning Board for their review, and it will return to us at a later date. Mr. Hales?
Thank you, council, and we'll shift gears a little bit, and we're excited to bring you this tonight on this agenda. It's a rezoning to facilitate redevelopment and reinvigoration of an older medical office park near Wake Med Cary Hospital in southern Cary. The subject of redevelopment efforts are 10 and a half acres that was formerly known as, or currently known as, the Medical Park of Cary. Most of you are familiar with this area off Asheville Avenue. It's located between Wake Med Cary Hospital and the US 1 and 64 corridor, near the intersection of Kildare Farm and Tryon Roads. And so, the existing Medical Park of Cary consisted of eight single-story medical office buildings constructed in the mid to early 1990s, and the total square footage on those property, the entire property is approximately 95,000 square feet. This property was zoned general commercial conditional use in 1990, and the conditions on the property or imposed on the property at that time really related to limiting the office, the used office, and discussing things that are currently controlled by our LDO are really no longer applicable, but points of access, stormwater controls and architectural The proposed zoning is mixed use, and they are seeking this to facilitate redevelopment of the site, consistent with the growth of Wake Med Cary Hospital and other surrounding developments in the area. And to achieve this goal, they're taking advantage of the opportunity provided through the mixed-use overlay district, which allows them to submit a preliminary development plan with flexible dimensional standards. The existing eight buildings on the site will be replaced in their entirety with two four-story new medical office buildings, and that 95,000 square feet of office space is going to be increased by 153% to almost 241,000 square feet of medical office. To accommodate this additional square footage, the applicant is providing the predominant amount of parking and structured parking, five tiers of it. And they provide a rendering to illustrate their conceptual ideas for what they want the site to look, which is a modern medical office aesthetic, consistent with the design of the adjacent Wake Med Cary Hospital. This particular concept or other similar architectural concepts are difficult to institute under our existing architectural standards, and so therefore, you'll notice in the staff report, there's a list of modifications to the town's standards to let them achieve this particular design aesthetic. Please note, however, that this is a conceptual rendering, it's one potential way to design, however, it is not a zoning condition. In relation to the Imagine Cary Growth Framework map, this property is designated as a destination center. These areas are intended to support higher use intensities in predominantly three to seven-story buildings, and the plan also indicates that to support these higher densities, the predominance of parking should be provided in structures, which they're complying with. We've initially identified the work and shape chapters as most applicable to this request based on our preliminary review. We've reviewed in brief that the redevelopment existing medical center of Cary represents potential increases in employment opportunities and diversity within the economy, and the additional density and height is bringing the site more consistent and compatible with the multi-story development surrounding this particular site, in particular, the hospital itself, a five-story hotel and a three-story medical office building adjacent to it. The site is not impacted by any stream buffers or floodways, nor are there any facilities identified in the Parks and Rec and Cultural Resources Facilities Master Plan within the vicinity. As noted earlier, the property is located near the intersection of Kildare Farm and Tryon, both of which are identified as thoroughfares in the planned roadway width map, however, does not have access to either of them directly. It does use Asheville Avenue, which is a local road. The site is well situated in relation to transit facilities. There are existing go-Cary routes along Kildare Farm Road and existing go-triple routes along Property owners within 800 feet of the subject property were notified of the public hearing, and the property was posted and public hearing announced on the town's website, consistent with town practices. A neighborhood meeting was held on December 6th, 2017. There were three attendees. There were no one speaking in opposition, and inquiries related to other opportunities for redevelopment and development within the area. Since the neighborhood meeting, we have had very few inquiries, and those have been limited to just getting general information about what's being proposed and what's going on. So, that concludes staff's presentation. Following the public hearing, we'll be available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll invite the applicant forward for their comments.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Jason Barron with Morningstar Law Group here on behalf of the applicant HTA. Excited to be here with this proposal tonight, I believe, knock on wood, fingers crossed. This is exactly what your Cary community plan is calling for in a location like this, for a use like this. It's in close proximity to existing medical facilities. It's redeveloping one-story medical facilities to multi-story medical facilities. It's incorporating structured parking. It does include requests for modifications with respect to design standards, but as Kevin noted, the design standards don't allow the applicant to achieve the modern look of the building they're looking for in this location. And so, I'm going to keep my comments brief. I don't have a whole lot to add to what Kevin did, other than to say, I've worked on other cases in this area, not along Asheville Avenue, but in this overall destination center, that were for one-story uses that received a less-than-warm reception from this council. I'm cautiously optimistic the council will be more receptive to multi-story medical office in this location. And so, with that, we respectfully request you all's support. Once we come back to you all and are here to answer any questions you may have. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. At this time, now's the time for the public hearing, 17 RZ30 Cary Medical Park, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? I see no one. We'll close the public hearing and open it up to council members for questions or comments.
I have a quick question. When we do a PDP like this, do we have to be as specific, like on these stories of buildings? You know, is it, does that include the vertical? We do a PDP because it seems to me like, you know, it says, one says four or five stories. Could it say four to seven? What, could it say something else and still fit within our, what a PDP is? And then that would make the parking deck taller, perhaps? I'm just asking our general how PDP works.
It could. What you're seeing are maximums, those are what they're committing to in regards to the traffic generation. So, we have to generate, we have to study what the maximum generation would be, and obviously, if you do five to seven, that extends that out a lot.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments?
Is the location of the parking deck a condition in the rezoning, or is it is a condition?
The PDP is the zoning.
It is the site plan, PDP altogether.
Right, it sets all the dimensional standards and the general layout.
So, the picture, the conceptual drawing that we saw, it will essentially look like that, except for maybe some, you know, the outside might be the scale, the scale, the location of the parking deck, all the rest of that is still...
The general massing may look like this, however, the, remember, the architecture is not being committed to as a condition, this is generally... This is generally a conceptual rendering. So the buildings would be oriented like that, but they may look completely different.
But it's going to look like a nice new medical office building built today, not in the 70s.
That is the intent that they are telling us, however, there are no conditions.
Right. I mean, I'm pretty confident they're not going to build something that looks like it was built in the 70s. To me, this is exciting. I mean, this is a great redevelopment of existing medical area, serves a need in our community. Cary's growing, need for medical services is growing. This is exciting.
One more thing. I didn't see, in the back in the drawing, I didn't see the under, well, you're active with the buttons there. There's no under-building parking, and I know next door, just to the west of this, there's a three- or four-story office building with under-building parking. This is showing a deck and no under-building parking.
That is correct. That's currently what they're showing.
Okay. I would like, love to see.
There's nothing that would preclude them from doing that if they wanted to.
Well, that's what I'm asking, is a PDP.
It's a PDP.
Does that?
They're capping it to 90 feet and four stories and 107,000 square feet. If they can figure out a way to excavate and do under-building parking, that would not count against.
That's good. That's what I'm asking.
So there's opportunities there. It's flexible.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, okay.
Any other questions or comments? I got a lot of doctors over there. I just hope you keep them. They're hoping you keep, you're keeping them in business.
Keeping them in business.
So this will go to our Planning and Zoning Board, and we'll see this at a future date. Thank you, Mr. Hales.
Thank you.
We now move to our last public hearing. It's 17 RZ32 Campbell Road Storage. Assistant Planning Director Deborah Grant will once again introduce this item. Council will not take action on this rezoning. Instead, it will be referred to our Planning and Zoning Board, and will return to us a few months from now. Ms. Granton?
Thank you. This is a request to rezone 2.12 acres located at 2500 Campbell Road. Subject property is located at the intersection of Campbell Road and Tryon Road, in close proximity to Swift Creek Elementary School, and near the Swift Creek Shopping Center on the opposite side of Campbell Road. Subject property is currently developed with a commercial use. It is in Wake County. You may be familiar with the Campbell Road Nursery, which is ready to close, if it has not already closed. The property owner, Mrs. Campbell, is ready to sell the property. And there is a proposed rezoning to go from Wake County residential 40 watershed to industrial conditional use. There is also an annexation petition, which you heard the public hearing for a month ago. Conditions proposed by the applicant would limit the use to mini storage, would be the only use allowed on the property. All units will be accessed from the interior of the building. All perimeter lighting shall be directed towards the interior of the site and exterior lighting fixtures facing downward. And then there's a requirement with a zoning condition that the 75% masonry requirement be met with brick and cast stone. So our community appearance manual already requires 75% masonry, but that could be things like concrete block. So this calls, this is an example of how somebody offers a zoning condition to make something more unique or more exceptional. This is a sample elevation submitted by the applicant. It is not a zoning condition, but this shows how with the community appearance manual standards, this site could be developed. We've done a preliminary analysis of the request and seen that the proposed use would provide appropriate transitions. There's an adjacent single-family lot to the east of the property. There's a cemetery to the south, and then frontage on Campbell Road and on Tryon Road. This would support and facilitate infill development, and the standards proposed by the applicant, both with our community appearance manual and the zoning conditions, would help to maintain an attractive appearance. This property is located in a destination center. It is not in a mixed-use overlay district. Therefore, the applicant does have the opportunity to request this mini-storage type of facility. The site is not impacted by any streams or floodways, according to our GIS maps, and this shows the location of future and proposed greenway trails in the vicinity. Campbell Road is designated as a collector road, and Tryon Road is designated as a thoroughfare. And as you can see, Cary's jurisdiction ends here. Doesn't mean that the road ends, just that that's where our jurisdiction ends. There is a future proposed go-cary route located along Holly Springs Road to the west of the property. And this shows you the notification boundary 800 feet from the subject property, and the property was posted and advertised on Cary's website. There was a neighborhood meeting in January. There was no one other than the applicant who attended the meeting. Staff received two calls about sewer availability to the adjacent property, questions about stormwater management and runoff, no opposition, just general questions about what might be allowed. And then recently, we heard from the current property owner asking for support, and I believe the council received that email as well. This concludes staff's presentation. Following the applicant's comments, and the public hearing will be available for your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Granton. At this time, I would invite the applicant forward for their comments.
This should be the last time to hear from me tonight. Still a good evening, still Jason Barron with Morningstar Law Group here on behalf of the applicant. The applicant in this case is Carroll Companies. They're the proposed developer of the many-story facility, many-storage facility on this site. I sent each of you an email earlier today covering some highlights, but I would like to reiterate it since we have a public hearing. The site is, and I'm going to do it backwards, the site is technically in a destination center, and I was trying to remember. So it's in a destination center, but it's what I would consider an appendage of the destination center. And the reason I say that is there are several properties in this area that are technically designated pursuant to that. There's a small parcel to the south of this site that's actually a cemetery. And then the vast majority of this is Swift Creek Elementary School. So Swift Creek Elementary School is in the destination center, and we're looking, we're expecting great things from them in terms of vertically integrated mixed use at some point in the future. I say that in jest, because it is a tough area within which to achieve a lot of what the destination center recommendations call for. As you all are aware, there's five areas in the town where it's called for the highest intensity and highest density uses. Ideally, you're getting vertically integrated mixed use at a scale of three to seven stories in height. It's tough to achieve that on normal sites. It's really tough to achieve that in this particular location due to the limited site acreage and additionally, the constraints associated with Tryon Road and Campbell Road. And so what happens is you come to a situation where you've got an existing use which needs to be redeveloped. I think everybody agrees the highest and best use of that site is not a nursery. And so the question becomes, what is the highest and best use of the site? As I mentioned in my email, and when the concept was first introduced to me, my first reaction was, I'm not sure, I'm not sold that a many-story storage facility is going to be a use that the council wants to see. As we started to dig into it, as I personally started to dig into it further, some of the benefits, some of the significant benefits that I see from it is that, for instance, it allows verticality, and you can create a vertical use at that site. You can have multi-storied uses at that site by having a many-storage use. And the reason why you can do that is because the parking requirements are so low. Any use that would have a lot of activity, any use that generated a lot of trips, would require a lot more parking, and on a site that's just two acres, the moment you start to park that, you're immediately defaulting, generally speaking, to single-story buildings. So you can achieve verticality, and I've got the slide. I'm going to jump into the architecture. I've heard this council say before on other cases that I've worked on in this area, that this is an entry to the town. This is a gateway to the town, and so what we want to do, what the council has expressed an interest in doing, is ensuring that what was developed there is going to create that kind of gateway experience. Again, recognizing it's a two-acre site, you've got limited abilities to be able to do those things, I believe a self-storage use allows you to do that. I believe a many-story storage facility allows you to do that. The elevation that's in front of you, and I mentioned in the email, it was a condition, I think, for a portion of the time. We actually submitted it as a condition, and a day before the staff report needed to be finalized, we were told by the town attorney's office that this couldn't be accepted as a condition. But we had attempted to say, this is exactly what we want to do. And so we didn't have a whole lot of time to kind of pull narrative out of the document and put that onto the page, and so we're happy to do that. We were quickly able to say, we'll do the 75%. But I want the council to understand, and I educated my client early on, and the owner is well aware of the expectations of the council associated with high-quality architecture at this location. As people come into town, you don't want to see something that is not going to be appealing to the eye. And so I believe that having a many-storage use, that you can have multi-stories, you can have more of an office-like feel to it, you can increase the amount of, you know, amount of masonry as part of the building. I think that it's a use that's unique in that nature in terms of being able to start to satisfy some of the challenges of making a destination center fit in an area that maybe isn't supposed to be a destination center. And then lastly, is, I'll go back to 74, so maybe, lastly are the site constraints. And so Tryon Road is median divided in this location. Campbell Road is a left-over with a right-out. And so if any use on this site, if it wanted to travel west, it has to go through Swift Creek Shopping Center and access Jones Franklin and either go back up to Tryon or come down to Holly Springs. So the ability to leave the site and head west is severely constrained. And the same is true for folks approaching the site from the west to the east. They're going to have to come through Swift Creek Shopping Center to access the site. And so as a result, it's a less-than-ideal location for a retail use or an office use because it has limited, you know, limited access. It's also not the best use for neighboring properties like Swift Creek Shopping Center to put in a use on this site that's going to generate a lot of traffic. Again, many storage is one of the unique uses that doesn't generate a lot of traffic. And so we think those are three very compelling reasons. You can achieve verticality. It will have a high commitment to architecture, and it makes sense because it's a low-traffic-generating use in a site that really shouldn't be generating a lot of traffic. So with that, we appreciate you all's attention and look forward to working with the town through the process. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Barron. Now's the time for the public hearing for 17 RZ32 Campbell Road Storage, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and others in attendance. My name is Margaret Phil Campbell, and I live at 2816 Campbell Road in Raleigh. And my husband and I are owners of the 2500 Campbell Road property that is up for annexation and rezoning this evening. On April 4, 2018, we sent you an email that was pretty much from our hearts, and explained why we must sell the 2500 Campbell Road property. I would like to go over some of the most important points for the benefit of those who are here this evening, who did not receive the email, and for those who might not have had an opportunity to read the one we sent. Carlton and I have owned this 2500 Campbell Road property since 2005, and have had a very successful business, as well as being a great neighbor to the community. At our age, it has become increasingly more difficult for us to maintain two nursery sites, and for this reason, we are selling the retail site. We are moving the over 100-year-old cabin to our wholesale site, which includes a house that's over 100 years old as well. That Carlton's great-grandmother built, by the way, so we're pretty proud of those two things. One of the other reasons for leaving the corner of Tryon and Campbell, and this is probably one of the most important reasons, is the danger for our customers when they enter and they leave our property. No one has the patience to let them turn in anymore. The traffic is out of control in our area and does not need additional cars in and around Campbell Road. Several companies came to us a few years back, but we felt they were either not a good fit for the neighborhood, or that they would produce too much traffic. When Be Safe Self-Storage came to us, a North Carolina-based company, Cadillac of self-storage companies, we did some research on the company and decided that they would be a good fit for our neighborhood. The self-enclosed office building look will be well landscaped to carry specs, have regular open hours, and not be late, not be open late in the evenings, and will not have anyone loitering around the site. We feel this is safe, not only to the neighborhood, but to Swift Creek Elementary School. We believe that we have made the correct decision in asking for you to allow the property to be annexed and rezoned for the Be Safe Self-Storage building. Carlton and I would appreciate your support in accomplishing this task, and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Next speaker, please.
My name is Billy Ellidge. I live at 6029 Yachts Mill Pond Road in Raleigh. Carlton and Phil and I go way back. Carlton and I are about the same age. I was born and raised beside Swift Creek School, and I've moved probably about a quarter of a mile in my lifetime. So I'm here to kind of represent the senior people in our community, and I believe that this is something that should be done with this property. It will be a benefit to the community because of all the apartments that own Franklin Road, Jones Franklin Road, and all the housing that was allowed on the Pritchett property. And so I believe that this would be a benefit to the community. And it's kind of like, I'd rather have this than a Bojangles, I'd rather have this than a bank, I'd rather have this than, I don't know how many apartments that you could put on this land. So, and they are kind of getting long in the tooth like I am, and they do need to retire. And they have been, Carlton has lived in the same place all of his life, and I have too, basically, and it's time that they need to be allowed to do what they can with this property, so that they may be able to get out of debt and move on with their lives. And it is, to me, the best thing that could happen. It's not an unattractive property venture, and it will certainly not increase the traffic that is already there, that we see from the Swift Creek School every afternoon, and from Yachts Mill Pond Road, by the way, that actually is on my ancestors' land that was taken from my father back in around 2000. So we do have a history, and I really appreciate any consideration that you would give the Campbell family in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Dr. Gregory Lucier. I'm a member of the Faculty of Civil Construction and Environmental Engineering at NC State University, and my wife Catherine and I own the property and reside there at 2701 Campbell Road, about 800 feet to the south of the property we're considering tonight. Campbell Road has been our home for 10 years, and during that time, we've come to know well Phil Campbell and other members of her family. We have immense respect for the Campbell family, and we're aware of the many challenges that have led them to the place of selling their family land, and that's, of course, what brings us here tonight. So it is clear to Catherine and myself that Phil and her family are proceeding in good faith, and they have a deep-seated desire to make reasonable and responsible decisions for the Campbell Road community, given the various constraints at hand. Issues such as minimization of traffic, noise, and litter, they're of great importance to the community, and the current proposal is favorable on those points. It's further clear to us that, given the growth trajectory of the town of Cary, the properties on the corners of Campbell Road and Tryon Road will eventually be annexed, rezoned, and redeveloped. All of these corner properties fall within Cary's ETJ or Long-Term Land Use Plan, and while our first use would be for all properties on or adjacent to Campbell Road to remain rural residential with very low-density development, we realize this is not a realistic expectation. Given the inevitability of redevelopment, we believe the proposed concept of a self-storage masquerading as an office building, as presented to us... masquerading as an office building, as presented to us, is a workable solution, and we're generally supportive of this redevelopment request. We do, however, have some concerns, and we hope those can be addressed by the town staff, by the applicant, and by the Planning and Zoning Board before the council votes on whether to allow this project. Our first concern is the most significant. We are strongly opposed to industrial zoning, even with conditions, and could not support any final plan that includes an industrial designation. Industrial zoning, even with conditions, it's incongruous with the surrounding properties. It does not offer the necessary harmonious transition between the existing commercial zones and the existing rural residential zones. We do, however, believe that a zoning classification such as Office Research and Development, ORD, would be far more appropriate for this area and should still allow this type of special facility to proceed. We also note that ORD zoning was recently used for the Be Safe facility, recently approved on Highway 54, and we would be interested in the expertise of your staff on this matter. Our second concern is that the height of any proposed structure should be also compatible with the surrounding elementary school and the rural residential areas. We request that a strict limit on structure height of 35 feet be considered, with a further stipulation that elevations of the existing grades not be increased. This should not be overly burdensome to the proposed development and should work with the proposed conceptual plan with minor changes. Thirdly, we have concerns about stormwater runoff and impervious surface limits, and as you all are well aware, the property under consideration lies within the Swift Creek watershed, and the current county zoning places a limitation on impervious surface area that can be as low as 12 percent of gross lot size. Annexation into the town of Cary could potentially allow for an impervious surface area use of up to 70 percent of this site with stormwater controls. The residential areas immediately downstream of the site are already wet and low-lying. They include a 50-foot Swift Creek buffer zone, and we hope that development on the northern end of Campbell Road would hopefully include reasonable restrictions on the impervious surface usage that fall significantly below the theoretical maximum of 70 percent, again, assuming annexation and rezoning and stormwater controls. An impervious surface limit, for example, of 50 percent, to throw out a number, should not be overly burdensome to the development as proposed, but it should allow for a substantial portion of the site to remain in a substantially vegetated state. And finally, an obvious concern that I'm sure the council has considered, we hope that should the council vote to proceed, some mechanisms or conditions can be included to ensure that the final development substantially matches the development being proposed and discussed, including all of the positive features being touted in support of the project. So, I thank the council for your time. I respectfully request that the comments presented here be given serious consideration, and my wife and I look forward to seeing a successfully implemented version of this proposal that's agreeable to the town, to the Campbells, to their potential developer, and also to the existing adjacent rural residential community of which we are a part. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker for this public hearing. Anyone else to speak at this public hearing? Saying no one will close the public hearing and open it up to council members. Oh, Mr. George, oh, no, you wanted another one. I don't know why it was this one. Open up the council members for questions or comments.
First question, I guess. The applicant tried to offer the renderings and, you know, architecture of the building as a condition and could not. Can you better help us understand why?
What they were looking for was to be able to offer something similarly to what they had done with quasi-judicial cases in the past, where you have a site plan and you have an elevation that's actually part of what's being considered. This, we were viewing as a preliminary illustration and rendering. It was not accompanying a development plan, and it didn't have the specific language to help us ensure enforcement of it. It's not to say that we can't work toward that with a little bit more time and get some more specific standards that are enforceable, but there was, you know, at the time that the legal office was looking at it, and the question came up about, are we 100 percent sure that this is what they're offering? And it was more of a conceptual drawing. We asked them to please withdraw that at this time, and they can consider doing something more to beef up their, their conditions as this goes forward.
Okay, so, as, as this goes forward, the applicant can continue to work with you all and possibly come up with...
What the rendering showed was consistent with the community appearance manual standards, and it did show a rendering of masonry material consistent with the zoning condition they offered, but, you know, to have the exact amount of brick and whether or not it was brick or it was, you know, stone, we didn't have that level of detail to be able to accept that drawing as a zoning condition.
Okay. And then, I guess, a question for the applicant. The last speaker mentioned, you know, a concern of something over 35 feet. Can you give me an idea of how tall this building will be?
I don't have that answer. I think we're kind of in that ballpark between 35 and 40, but we can, we'll have that answer, certainly.
I know it's not a convention or anything, but you have it on the...
Yep. And that was the first I'd heard of that, and I'm happy to work with Dr. Lucere on his, on his concerns, and wouldn't be surprised if we offered a height restriction. I can't commit to you right now that it would be 35 feet, but I wouldn't be surprised if we were pretty close to that.
Okay. Thank you. I guess I'll just offer some comments and then leave.
I can clarify the building height, too, is if they're within 50 feet of a residential parcel, which they are, they would be limited to 35 feet. They could increase that by one foot for each additional foot, building setback. The site's pretty small, so chances of it going much more than that, you know, probably wouldn't be more than just a couple of feet above that.
Okay. My final comments, I guess, I'm generally supportive of the proposal. I get some of the concerns or that it's, you know, a gateway into Cary, and we want our gateways in Cary to look great, but the reality is, at least for now, in the foreseeable future, the die's kind of already been cast on what this area is going to look like in the foreseeable future. It's, you know, it's got two drugstores, a gas station, fast-food places, we got Bojangles coming, it's a, it's a pretty commercial-type center. I don't know that what's being proposed is out of character with that. The site is, you know, limited in size. I agree with the applicant's comments about if you're trying to do something else or an office use, trying to park that site might be difficult. I find it a very low-impact use next to a school, a very-low-impact traffic generator. I drive this every other Friday during the summer on my way to Wake County Speedway, and I tend to leave about 4:00 to beat the traffic, so it's, it can be bad at times. So, like I said, I'm generally supportive of the proposal. I would look forward to the applicant and our staff working together to maybe clean up a few issues.
Mr. George.
Yeah, I guess, first of all, a comment, I, you know, always listen to what everybody's got to say and value the, I don't know what we're up to now, 90 years of whatever we are of council experience among just the six of you. And I've heard these horror stories of, I didn't get what I wanted, you know, we didn't get what we were promised, or I had in mind something different, and, and I've tried to be very careful to not, to not have one of those moments, but I'm afraid I've got one of those moments on a previous decision on a mini-storage. And it's because I've, you know, just been on long enough to have seen something constructed with orange doors that show through these windows over on Highway 55, and it just galls me that that was, this, all this architectural stuff was presented on the outside of the building, but not what you could see through the windows, which is just like a poster or billboard, because there's lights on it. So, it's like you can't have a sign outside, but you can turn the lights on inside and line up these roll-up orange doors, and everybody's, "Oh, mini-storage." And so, I've got a, wish I had listened to Ed on that one, but Ed wasn't here, actually. Ed missed that vote. That's what happens when you, that's what happened, I should have listened to Lori. That's what happens when you get a vote of three people voting for, I should have listened to the mayor. But, but I want to make sure in this case, there's not that same thing that happens to us, that the outside of the building is great, but we're looking at orange doors inside through the glass.
So, my comment was going to be very similar, and I wish you would have listened to me back then, too. But I think there's, this is where the transparency discussions that we have in our requirements and our ordinances, and I know staff and Kevin Hales and I have been talking about this ad nauseam, really has some issues, our current ordinances, we have some issues with what we want to see. And those orange doors or whatever, and I don't know from the applicant perspective what they're, what they're willing to do, but that is on Tryon Road, and it's a road well-traveled, right? And I'm looking at the elevation now for Tryon Road, and it has a lot of transparency and a lot of possibility for bright orange doors. And I get that the applicant is keeping to our transparency requirement, but this is one of those opportunities that we've been talking about where there could potentially be something better than what our ordinance requires. And I'd really like to see if staff could work on that, because I think, as much as I don't like storage units, there are times and places and locations, and with everything going on around it, I agree with you, this is probably the best use, but how do we make it not look like the orange door storage units? And I think, I don't know where we are with that. I know that staff has talked about it, but this is a perfect opportunity. There's a whole wall of transparency there, there's a whole bunch of windows. We know it's going to be lit up at night, right? Because that's what storage units do. This is the way that they get some of their advertisement. We've got to figure out a way to make it less, you know, jarring.
Well, and it can be done. I mean, they just built one on 54, just south of James Jackson, that looks like a very-high-quality office building, and you can't see the doors through the windows on the inside.
And I don't know if that's a condition, I don't know what can happen there, but I'd really like to find something. You're on it. Okay.
One difference between retail, commercial, and office sometimes is the landscaping, because an office building doesn't need to show all of itself off to, for people to come there, right? So, they do trees with, you know, what do you call those, under-story trees or whatever. And when you're putting in a commercial or retail building, you might not want to have as much landscaping, because you want to be able to have that visible. So, maybe it's a matter of also improving the landscaping, not just the architectural standards, but the landscaping around it.
Good point.
Lots of opportunity.
Other comments, questions?
At first, I was kind of a little bit leery of the use, but, you know, I think, Don, you brought up some good points. We've really got to get some of these things that are conceptual, and we have to have them documented in the conditions. And had an opportunity today to drive around and look at some of the storage units, and you can see that we're evolving and they're getting better, you know, they're getting better. But I got to tell you, you go down 55, and there's two, the same, same vendor, I guess, you know, side by side, and I got a kick out of your comments about the door, because both of them have the stupidest orange signs that just look so out of character. Here, they have this nice building that they're trying to comply with, landscaping looked good, the bricks looked good, everything looked good, and you got this, this anemic-looking, same vendor, two buildings, two different color oranges. At least get your oranges right. I mean, it's just, it's, maybe they ran out of money for the darker orange, I don't know, but I, I think this is our entrance, I think we have to be a little bit picky about it, at the same time, to be fair. It is a bizarre location, and it's a lot better than those 5,000 to 6,000 to 7,000 units that have been slapped in on the Raleigh side that have done more, probably more property damage to Campbell Road than anything Cary ever did. So, what you at least have here is the opportunity and the potential, as we have our entrance, to have that, that landscaping and that look and that masonry. I think the intent is there, I can see it in some of the language. I just want to make sure that we get what we're expecting, so I'd like to just see the applicant work with the staff, you know, to try to clean that up and give us that assurance. And, and then we can always hope that the one next to it doesn't become another gas station next to a school. So, all we can do is just keep hoping for that. If we do that, you'd make me very happy if you'd get rid of those stupid orange signs, though, you really would.
I did, I forgot one thing. The question came up from the neighbor. Is there any other zoning that it could be in other than industrial conditioning?
If they were to go to the ORD that they were mentioning, then they'd have to come back and ask for a special-use permit. So, this would allow this use by right, and it would not be permitted use in office. So, they, or if they were to go to...
So, what's the functional end-result difference of ICU versus ORD with a special-use permit? The functional difference?
With a conditional use, it's its own unique zoning district, so I can, we can understand...
Can't be anything but.
Right. With the conditions that they've offered, it's not opening it up to other industrial uses. They are limited to solely the mini-storage as a, as a principal use. They could have a, they could have an office for an employee on the first floor, they could, you know, have an incidental use in the site, but the principal use would be limited by the zoning conditions they've offered to this office.
And if it were ORD with a special-use permit...
Well, then, there's a multitude of other...
It could be, it could be lots of other things.
Right.
It just happens to have this one because we've given a special use for it.
So, they'd have to come back in for a quasi-judicial public hearing. They'd have to get the zoning, and then they'd have to come back in with a site plan.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
I get the concerns regarding the orange doors, because it looks bad, but, I mean, we just approved a Bojangles across the street on the corner. I mean...
What do you say about Bojangles?
I wasn't in that Bojangles. I mean, it's bright oranges and yellows and reds, I mean, it's... I understand. It was the context of the building. I understand what you're saying, and I know that we have the Boz. And it, it's, it's this issue where we get 80 percent there, and it's like, to wrap it up, we forget about that last 20 percent. And that's what it looks like on 55. You have this beautiful potential, those buildings, then you got these two little stubs out there that, you know, the signs that just don't even match the quality of the area, and it just gives it an ugly look.
Thank you for saying that.
And I'll volunteer to lead a group effort on a Saturday with paint buckets to show up on Highway 55, and we'll just go inside and paint some orange doors.
Okay, we'll just move along, move along. Any other questions or comments? This is going to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation. We'll see this in a few months, probably June. Okay, that ends the public hearings. We move to discussion items. Our first discussion item is 2018 Legislative Agenda, and Director of Special Project Atlanta High will present this item, and council may take action on this item.
Good evening, council. The purpose of this item for consideration is for consideration of a 2018 Legislative Agenda consisting of federal and state legislative goals and advocacy principles. Before we move to this year's recommended agenda, I'd like to update you on the status of your 2017 goals. First of all, we sought a local bill that would allow the Apex School Resource Officer to follow the Apex High School students to Cary while their school was being rebuilt. Representatives Adcock, Dollar, and Hall, along with Representative Williams, who represents the Apex area, introduced House Bill 55, Apex Cary Police Assistance on School Grounds. This bill was enacted, allowing the SRO that the students were already familiar with to continue serving that student body. The students will be there next year as well, after which they will return to their newly-rebuilt Apex High School, and Green Level High School will open with its own student body. And we certainly appreciate the work of all of our legislators to get this bill through before the start of the 2017-2018 school year. Also, the Aran Devestment Act was amended, this was something that the town supported, to make it less bureaucratic and easier to comply with. We're also very pleased that no detrimental changes were made to the Jordan Lake rules or to statutes regarding repairium buffers. This picture is of the first small-sail wireless pole in Cary. Our goal was to retain municipal control over the development process, rights of way, and town property in relation to these type of infrastructure. While we wouldn't classify the passage of House Bill 310, Wireless Communications Infrastructure Siding, as a win, I will say that the League, Cary, and many other municipalities... many other municipalities worked very hard to make it better and preserve some amount of municipal input. And you'll also recall that LDO amendments came to you a few months ago to bring our rules into conformance with this legislation. And finally, there was no action taken on bills that we were concerned about related to the timing or type of municipal elections. At the federal level, despite some early rhetoric to the contrary, the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act did not change the tax-exempt status of municipal bonds, which will allow Cary and municipalities, counties, and state governments all across the country to continue to use this form of debt to efficiently provide infrastructure improvements. Refunding bonds, however, did lose their tax-exempt status as of December 31, and you'll recall that Cary accelerated a planned sale of those bonds to December to take advantage of that tax exemption before it went away. There was no action at the federal level on e-fairness or level playing field legislation regarding sales taxes on internet and catalog sales. So on to 2018. The 2018 short session of the General Assembly convenes on May 16, and indications at this point are that the legislators truly want it to be a short session, thus limiting the number of items that will be considered. While the primary election will be complete by the time they convene, legislators are likely to be looking forward to and preparing for the general election in November. While we don't suggest seeking any local legislation this year, we do recommend supporting Apex's request for annexation of the right-of, a portion of the right-of-way of Laura Duncan Road in front of Laurel Park Elementary School. You may recall the incident last fall where the child was crossing the street from the school to the neighborhood and was, and was hit by a car. Fortunately, that didn't result in major injuries, and however, naturally enough, the neighbors asked for a crosswalk. The school is in Cary, the neighborhood is in Apex, and the NCDOT road is in unincorporated Wake County, leaving us without jurisdiction and Apex without jurisdiction to make those improvements. So after discussion with Apex, it was agreed that it would be most appropriate for Apex to annex this section of roadway, since they have utilities in the street. There are other state rights, state road rights of way in Cary with somewhat similar situations. Staff is working on that, so that may give you a little preview for next year's recommendations. We're also recommending that we continue to have on the agenda the protection of Jordan Lake and our buffer rules. We have one new item, and this is a support item for your consideration, to support providing resources to address emerging contaminants in drinking water. The North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality is working with the State Science Advisory Board to develop maximum contaminant level goals. Such science-based health advisory thresholds would be applied to ease public concerns about emerging contaminants that are now detectable at ultra-low concentrations. Modern measurement systems are able to detect a single part per trillion. So science-based standards will guide, provide guidance to our utility operations, and provide assurance to the public that the water we provide is of and continues to be always of the highest On the federal side, the proposed goals are the same as last year. Again, e-fairness legislation would allow the town to collect sales taxes for online sales and level the playing field with our brick-and-mortar businesses. Municipal bonds also continue to be a topic of discussion as, and the tax exemption of them, as Congress starts work on its FY2019 budget, and so we recommend continued attention in this area as well. Advocacy principles provide guidance to staff by providing a framework that allows rapid response when legislative events are happening quickly, which tends to be rather typical, actually. These are the same advocacy principles you've adopted in the past, but they have been updated to make them more current, including adding references to the Imagine Cary Community Plan, acknowledging our status as a maturing community, and addressing transportation needs more fully. And with that, staff recommends that council adopt a 2018 legislative agenda, including North Carolina and federal legislative goals, as well as advocacy principles. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. High. Questions for Ms. High, comments or motion?
I'd just like to thank Atlanta and town staff and everybody for all your work on this, just doing a great job, and keep it up, and good stuff.
Anyone else? Motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Second discussion. All in favor, please, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. High.
Thank you.
Move to our last discussion item, storm drainage request for Foxworth subdivision. Says Town Manager Stiegel is going to introduce this item, and council may take action.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Tonight provides evidence once again of the importance of stormwater management and control. And Councilmember Robinson was quoted earlier saying, "In spite of the fact that we exceed state standards and certainly any local standards that I have ever been associated with, what we do is not enough." And I know that she speaks for the entire council on that. And tonight, the item before you is an example of us taking the council's, I'd say arguably your number-one priority when it comes to operations, and turning it into something that meets the current needs of the community and those in the future. So while this is a tool that has been in place for some time, we're using it in a much different way now, while we are also creating a lot of new tools that will meet the need as we grow into this program and continue to have dialogue with the community in the future. So this, this gives you not only evidence of what we're doing, but it starts to show some of the results that have been expected by the council as we move forward in this. And so with no further ado, I'll turn it over to Dan Clinton.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight, I will be presenting a request for drainage assistance and results from a detailed engineering analysis that was done to, to understand the flooding in this neighborhood. But first, I want to tell you a little bit about a storm you've already talked about. And that is the, on July 16, 2016, a very memorable day in stormwater. A summer thunderstorm came up slowly northeast from Apex.
It looked just like that.
Approximately centered along Lake Pine Drive. Now, this storm dropped almost six inches of rain in less than two hours. The storm relatively narrow in width, but very large in rainfall intensity, had a significant impact from yard flooding, street flooding, and some house flooding. Staff received over 80 calls related to that storm in the days that followed. Staff was able to address most of the 80 calls with technical guidance. This guidance was very helpful in most cases, but there were several homes that were flooded so severely that staff wound up working with FEMA, the homeowner and FEMA, under the Hazard and Mitigation Assistance Program to apply for grants for assistance. Unfortunately, none of the 12 houses that we applied for received funding. The neighborhoods impacted by July storm, one of them, this was Foxworth Neighborhood subdivision, neighborhood is near the intersection of West High Street and southwest Cary Parkway. This neighborhood has been, as you've heard, it's been impacted by flooding many times and, many times in the past, including most recently, a significant storm August of 2014 and the July 2016 storm. Six homeowners from Foxworth contacted us regarding flooding. As site visits found, multiple homes experienced crawl space and garage flooding, and these homeowners asked the town for assistance. Here's a picture of the flooding from the August 2014 event. Of course, the July 2016 event happened when most storms happen, on a weekend in the evening, so it was very difficult to get pictures of that particular storm. But as we deal with the more challenging situations, we hired a professional engineering consultant who specializes in flood modeling to evaluate the neighborhood to see if anything could be done to reduce or eliminate the Here you can see a picture of Job for Drive within the Foxworth neighborhood, and the six applicants are highlighted in blue. The creek flows behind the properties, then through culverts under West High Street. Per our drainage assistance policy, the engineer evaluated the flooding and is recommending that four of the six homeowners make modifications to their home as floodproofing measures. These measures can be, such as raising your HVAC units or wet floodproofing your crawl space, can protect their home. The engineer found that for two of the homes, highlighted in red, floodproofing measures simply do not protect the homes. Staff has reached out to the homeowners, as you heard tonight, provided them with engineering report and recommendations that we are presenting here tonight, and we will continue to provide technical guidance as needed. Here you can look at the two homes. Both homes are recommended for purchase. Mr. Cruz's home is in the foreground at 113 Jodhpur, and 117 Jodhpur is the background, in the background is owned by Mr. Ider and Mr. Kelly, who you heard from tonight. I have some photos to show you from the high-water marks post-storm event. Here's Mr. Cruz's son. He's pointing out the, how high the water got. It just, just barely below the door threshold of the finished floor, and the garage sits below that, so they wound up with about several, several feet of water in the garage during this event. Here's the backside of the house, and you can see the high-water line filled the crawl space entirely, destroying the HVAC and all the ductwork. Here's a close-up of 117, Mr. Kelly and Mr. Ider's property. This is from the August 2014 event. You see, it's flooded there. The July 2016 event was even higher. There's the high-water line. It reached two to three feet in the garage itself, so. The engineer also looked at the culverts, upgrading the culverts under West High Street, and found that it would not prevent flooding of these homes. State law allows for acquisition of property to prevent flooding damage. Also, town policy allows acquisition, if property meets public benefit, for water quality, preventing flooding, and minimizing negative stormwater impacts. The proposed use for this property would be open space. As in the past, when we purchased properties for flooding under this program, when the houses were removed, we revegetated the property with trees, and so the property could help reduce flooding and improve water So staff's recommendation is to offer to purchase the properties, 113 and 117 Jodhpur Drive, at tax value, demolish the homes to prevent further damage from flooding, and to preserve these properties as open space with trees planted for the benefit of water quality, flooding, and the community. But before I conclude, I'd like to speak about the rationale for the purchase price recommendation. The value listed in the staff report is the current tax value. Based on guidance from our legal department, we believe that this is legally defensible, reasonable, fair, since appraisals do not take into account flooding. And at the end of the day, this is a voluntary program that exists to try to help those in difficult situations. So back to our recommendation to offer to purchase the properties at tax value and demolish the two homes at 113 and 117 Jodhpur Drive to prevent further flood damage and to preserve these properties as open space, with trees planted for the benefit of water quality, flooding, and the community. So that concludes my presentation. Staff will be available to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. George, this is the one you want to speak to first.
Yeah, I just want to say, the neighbors have just been delightful to work with and deal with, and when you see these pictures, you wonder how they could even be delightful to work with, because it's an extreme situation. When I looked, and we looked at the plat maps, and I pulled them, and the staff's been also very helpful. We've been working on this for a while together, and have been out on the site with the, with the homeowners, and the meetings there, and the meetings here at Town Hall. It's just amazing to me that the original developer, when he develops it, lays plat maps and shows half to two-thirds of the lots are flooded with a hundred-year flood, just that, just shows that the houses are clearly in the floodplain, just built houses in the floodplain. So it's been going on since 2002, when the, when Howard and Seymour, the ones in 117 moved in. So I think that's, it's commendable to the staff to be working on it. You know, having visited the day within 15 minutes of the little rain we had that delayed our park opening last summer, and see the water running through the grass and lapping against the house with just a 15-minute rainfall, just tells me it's just obvious, there's nothing we can do. It's, the staff's also looked at it, there's nothing upstream, there's no flood control measures that can be done, the engineers looked at it. I would, we also need to make recommendation, or it seems to me that we're going to have to do something about 115, because our goal is it never got sold as a house, probably because it was too low. I guess somebody owns it, maybe it's HOA, but there's 115 that there's no house on that's between 113 and 117, that the residents of 117 have been mowing and upkeeping that lot at their own expense since 2002, because it was overgrown in grass. So just like we've made changes on Brook Green, yeah, to the left of this house, let me see if you can, yeah, but between them, you can go right there you go. So there's grass over between these two houses. Where 115 is, you can see the grass going out to the side of the house on 117. So he's been mowing that grass, so I know we, we just mulched and planted the 700 block of Brook Green, so we wouldn't have to mow, the town wouldn't have to mow this lot. So we're also going to need to do something in 115 at the same time when these are, or something happens, it seems like.
Agreed.
Okay. Back to a point where you had like point 2A about the values. I did meet with them and know that there was, that they went to, yeah, there's 2A reasonable and fair. Appraisals do not account for appreciation due to flooding. Appraisals don't, but if a homeowner whose house has flooded multiple times goes to the Wake County Tax Office and gets his appraisal reduced because his house is flooding, then there are reductions in even tax value, because, so there is an actual reduction to that house, and he went and got that because he's flooded. So I'm wondering how that's, how that relates.
Well, he, tax value and appraisal are two different items, and he appealed to the, to the county, apparently, for a reduction in value of the property. So this is done, has been done in other places. It provides some temporary relief financially from the tax side of things.
But now he's got a reduced, reduced value because of the flooding, so that's why I questioned the, that's why I'm looking at the reasonable and fair. It seems to me that the reasonable and fair, how many properties in Cary have depreciated in the last three or four years since tax evaluation? The things are, they're not going down, they're going up. But he went and got his tax valuation reduced because of flooding. So it seems to me reasonable and fair to use the previous, higher tax valuation from the previous amount than the, than the current one, because it seems like he got it reduced because it's flooding. But that's just a, a thought, and it seems reasonable and fair to me, so that's, that's my, that's my comment, and that's why I'm proposing that would be a fair settlement to...
Ms. Simpson, you want to speak to that?
The town is constrained by the ideas of public purpose and public benefit, because we're using taxpayer funds, and I don't, the policy is not designed or doesn't read as if it's designed to make, and I don't believe it would be supportable if it were designed to make people whole. It's there to alleviate a problem. It's there to alleviate a problem, and it was, you know, it's difficult to determine what might be when you balance the different values and in different interests, but tax value just seemed to be something that was fair and reasonable to use in judging the value that was paid for, what would ultimately be a value, a voluntary transaction between the town and the property owner.
I would say differently. I'm not a legal expert, but the reason why we have these appraisals that happen with years apart is because communities don't have the resources to go out and appraise properties on a frequent basis, so they pick a number of years that will lapse, and then they can therefore get out and assign the resources to do the appraisals. And if you go out and you look at just about any house that's for sale, its appraised value or its sale value is not in keeping with the Wake County appraisal amount. It'll be 101%, 107%, 114% of the Wake County appraised value. So it's a static number. It's a number that grows stale with time, and it doesn't reflect the actual value of a house. So there's got to be a better way for us to fairly compensate the person. I understand that we're not trying to make them completely whole, but at the same time, I think we have a responsibility to be compassionate to the homeowners that already have undergone a tremendous amount of stress by having their properties flood the way it is. So my perspective is, is going out and having two appraisals performed is a fair way of doing it, and, you know, whether you average those, or, you know, take the higher, take the lower, I don't really care, but that would give us a more accurate read than, you know, a several-year-old appraisal that was done by the county. So that's my perspective. I think, you know, in the grand scheme of things, for our budget, that differential is not huge to our budget, but it is huge to the homeowners who have an asset, is their biggest asset.
If I could ask a question to Chris. Chris, just to clarify, your legal guidance or opinion, use whatever term you would think is best, is based upon the existing Town Council policy? Or is it based in the law?
Just basically in the law. The policy really doesn't address the price that's offered, and it's certainly something we can look at and, you know, consult with council about, about different approaches for this, because the policy hasn't addressed it. And in the past, the town has looked at appraisals, but they just aren't, they don't take into account the flooding issue, and in terms of the goals of the town to try and alleviate the problem townwide, best use of money, we can look and bring ways for council to come to consensus on how to approach this and the amount of money to offer.
I think, assuming, you know, part of our new chapter in stormwater, if you will, is one of the, one premise is that although it's very difficult to determine, you know, who is at fault, where does the town's responsibility end, and where do the citizens begin, you know, there has to be, you know, standards that have been set for that, and the town has done that in the past. But I think just generally speaking, what we're saying, I know what I'm saying, and recommending to you, is that we redefine that and assume that our piece of the pie is larger, and that we have more responsibility. And I've made it very clear, in order to do that, you know, we are the community, so the community is going to have to pay for that responsibility collectively. And we'll find out if they're, you know, eventually, if they're willing to do that, and we'll have our answer. But in the meantime, if it is possible, and again, I'm not, I have to defer to Chris, for us to provide something that is above and beyond the tax value, that would be consistent with what we're trying to do in this new chapter for stormwater. But again, it sounds like, Chris, you think maybe we could take a second look at it. I think that would be ideal, because I can tell you that I'm not happy with the tax value.
And I think if it was, if this was a matter of us buying this house months after the latest appraisal by Wake County, then we'd be in a different situation, but this is now an old appraisal. And I would say, the person, the people who bought this house probably didn't get a discount because it flooded in the first place when they bought the house. When they sell this house, let's say it's a 2,000-square-foot house, they're going to go out and look to buy another 2,000-square-foot house. If they've been compensated for a house that floods, they can afford another 2,000-square-foot house that floods. They can't afford a 2,000-square-foot house that's whole. So I just think we need to be careful.
And also, too, and just to clarify, as much as for staff and Chris's benefit, as it is the council's, and I know the council's not saying that, we will have to have some new formula or some new standard, because the universe of properties that may be sought to be purchased by the town in the future could be quite numerous. And thus, what we can't do is look at every single one of them on a case-by-case basis. And I know you're not saying that, but there has to be some revision above what tax value is. And so we, I don't know that we'll have enough information based upon just two. Actually, I would say we won't have enough based upon just two. But keeping that in mind, that I would encourage us to think of this as not yet setting a new standard, maybe it's moving away from an old one, but it's not yet setting a new one, if that makes sense.
I would just, I'm going to point it out, according to the Wake County Property Tax Site, 113 Jodhpur Drive, in 2015, the very end of 2015, sold for $274,000, the tax value of 245. So I would say that appraisal that was done at that sale did take into account the flooding. On 117, that house sold for $126,000 in 1991.
Before it flooded.
Probably before it flooded. So tax value on that house is now like 195.
So they appealed and got it reduced?
Well, that's not our fault.
Well, that's it. It's not our problem.
It is our problem.
It is, I think it is our problem. We want the most accurate read on what the.
It's not our problem that they.
It's not our problem that he went.
No, that's irrelevant. That's actually irrelevant in this case. In my opinion, that's irrelevant.
I agree.
So I think there will be new ways to be able to get accurate reads on appraisals faster from Wake County. I understand that they're purchasing some very powerful analytic software that might help them with that. So anyway, I think there'll be opportunities to get information in a more timely fashion, but in this particular case, I think we have to look at an alternative way, means for assessing fair value of the house, and I don't think it's the Wake County appraised value.
But what I was just pointing out, though, is in the end of 2015, the house sold for 274. That would have required an up-to-date appraisal prior to purchase. So given to what similar, like-kind quality houses are selling for, then or now, I would say that appraisal did take into consideration that the house was flooding, based on my experience.
There's probably a lot of factors we'd have to look at before making that conclusion.
I'd like to get the conversation back to, I think we really have to get back to, what is going to be our standard? You know, I don't think it is our job to make each individual property, hate to say it this way, whole. Our job is, we've seen a problem, we can address it with a formula, that if it isn't the tax value, I think we have to come up with parameters that we look at, so that we don't fall into this trap that we're in tonight, where it's case-by-case. That's a sinkhole we don't want to get into. We can have a case-by-case. You know, we've had a retreat, we talked about the magnitude of stormwater. It's a 5% problem that we're asking 95% of the community to help fix, and we have to apply a fair standard. And I don't think, you know, there is, there's these two words, harsh words, buyer beware, that there's a certain amount of responsibility that goes with where an individual decides to purchase. Now, there are a lot of other mitigating factors, why the plats allowed them to build, you know, the way they did, and all that kind of stuff. Excuse me, but I really think we've got to, we have to kind of step back from that and say, what is the formula that meets the greater good for Cary, provides some relief for those that have been impacted, sadly have been impacted of this magnitude? But it's not our job, I think, to make someone whole, to, you know, to their personal belief of what their house was worth before the flooding. You know, I just think, I think it's messy, and I don't think we're going to solve it up here tonight, but we've really got to look at, what are some of the practices out there? And if they're not out there, and we want to have a leadership role and do something unique and different, I think we have to have a certain amount, we have to design the formula and the approach that we're going to look at on these cases, or every time we have something like this, we're going to have people coming up.
Can somebody tell me how many houses we've bought in the past under this policy?
Five.
I would know the number.
I thought it was five. I thought it was five.
Seven.
Seven.
Seven with Park James and.
Caramel.
Being the last one, yeah.
So just to Mr. Smith's point, is it, would it be fair and reasonable to those seven homeowners who we bought at tax value to turn around and make a different decision here tonight, without going through the process of setting a new policy, the discussion, the research, the input, the data, and everything that would go into that? I see it, our two options are tonight, we go with staff recommendation, and we buy the homes at tax value, as we've done the other seven homes, or we table this until at a time in the future we can come up with a new policy.
I'm agreeing with you.
And I think, I was going to say, I think we're in agreement.
Yeah, I think we're in agreement.
And I think Mr. Stiegel said that, and I think Ms. Simpson recommended that, that we.
What would one clarify, my only concern would be, for one thing, for Councilmember Smith is, I mean, the stories are certainly heartfelt, I mean, speak for everyone on that. But I can tell you, in my desire to pay more than tax value, I'm not factoring those in. It's just, it's a recognition that, or need to move something above that, because the past situation doesn't accurately, in my view, reflect a revised definition of the town having more responsibility, but certainly not sole. I mean, homeowners who purchased the properties bear responsibility as well. It's just moving that needle a little more that way. As far as coming back, tabling this until we have a new formula, we are modeling this, and we don't yet have the full scope, and basing a new policy on two homes would be a bad decision.
Right.
And so I would encourage us to move forward with these two, but not come back again with other property purchases until that is constructed, and it would be, it's going to be a while.
Yep.
Great.
But still move these two. Chris, are we able to move forward tonight with a, does the council have to decide in the motion that at tax value component, or can that, can we report back to them on that later?
I think council could authorize staff to negotiate with the property owners with this conversation in mind, and staff can bring back what they're able to negotiate, and council can make a final decision.
That'd be ideal.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion?
I'd make that motion, that we, that we offer to purchase, prevent further flooding, and make, plant them, whatever the, plant them with trees and benefit of flooding for the flooding, and that they work with the homeowners on negotiating based on our conversations tonight.
I second that.
There's a motion, second, further discussion.
This one just gives me a little bit of heartburn, given that we had a discussion not too long ago about another house on Pamlico, and nobody was willing to go above tax value.
I think it's a huge mistake to do that. I think we have to stay with the tax value. I think we set possibly false expectations by, because I don't think there's consensus here, so how's the staff going to negotiate and come up with something that's going to come back to us? I think we may be going back and forth a long time. I'm not sure that's fair to a property owner either. I think they ought to have some sense of what the town will or would not do. If you believe that that's going to happen, then I guess then you'll support this, but I think it's way too ambiguous, vague, and I think it takes us down the wrong path.
Can you articulate, I'm not sure I absolutely understand your motion. Is it to offer to purchase the property at tax value with what?
Negotiating price is what I heard.
It would give the staff the authority to negotiate. It would be above tax value, and then report back for, I guess, council ratification. I would also offer, too, that while I'm suggesting it would be above tax value, I'm certainly not suggesting that it's going to be significantly above tax value, because these are voluntary sales. I mean, at the end of the day, we don't need the property for a public project. This isn't, the primary purpose here isn't for open space acquisition. We happen to get that. And so while tax value, again, I believe, doesn't adequately represent our new view on stormwater, certainly going greatly beyond that would not either. And so I don't think we're talking about a big range here.
I don't see the right, I think it's, I'm fine going with Wake County value, if I thought it was all relevant, but it is now four years stale. So that's the concern that I have. And so, I mean, I would be fine if somebody over at Wake County could look at this, these properties and say, if we were to appraise them today, this is what we'd appraise them at, and then we go, cool, we go with that.
Yeah, I think there's.
The other thing that's taken in the staff report is that we've got six other, is it six other houses, Dan, that are?
Six total, there are six total.
So four other houses.
Or other ones.
And the four other houses, the recommendations to those will be, those four houses will be impacted if we're able to demolish these and make this natural area, or make this different, that we're also, they'd be hurt otherwise, and from talking to the neighbors who are at 113 and 117, they seem to be willing to make some sacrifice for their neighbors, because they feel bad for their neighbors flooding too, but knowing they give up their house is going to help the neighbors. It's just, I think they're trying to be fair.
That's been the case in every other home acquisition we've done. It doesn't just benefit the homeowner of the home we buy, it benefits the surrounding community. There's nothing different.
That's right.
Yeah, the problem that I have is, when we look at these individually, they each have their own case, and I have great compassion for folks, because put any of ourselves in this position, and we would do exactly what they did, and come and, you know, with their hearts on their sleeve, I would feel the exact same way standing up there. So I totally understand that. The same point, you know, one of the houses was just sold two years ago, right? So I think that even with the market and the flood, I think that that sale price, tax value number is pretty accurate. What I hate doing is doing this willy-nilly at the council table and doing them one at a time, that just doesn't work. Plus, I have great compassion for the seven homes we've already bought and the others that are in the hopper. So I would lean to the, you know, putting my Giladcock hat on, we've had a process. The process has worked for the last seven. If it doesn't, if you guys want to stop this now and fix the process and do it, you know, and find some new process, then let's do that. But otherwise, let's stick to the process we have.
The reason why this is in front of you, I mean, well, it may never happen again. We certainly make a habit of having staff recommendation be up here, and then me say, I don't like the recommendation. Because for Chris's office and my office serve unique purposes, right, and sometimes those are differing, and this was the only way for Chris and I, and I think especially for Chris, to hear from the council formally, how your new look at stormwater would then be effectuated from a legal standpoint, okay? And so if it wasn't for that legal issue, and this conversation, and Chris hearing this, the staff recommended, we would have brought back something above tax value. And so all I'm saying is, if we stick to tax value, that's completely inconsistent with the direction of looking at stormwater differently. And that's okay. And that's okay, but just want to make sure that it would be incongruent with, you know, the council policy. Either we're going to take more responsibility or we're not. I do think it's not helpful to try to figure this out, you know, now at 9:20 on the council floor, we can table it, or, you know, we could proceed, and if you don't like what we come up with, you can reject it and we can come back.
I think what Lori said is not incongruent with what you're saying. I don't think it's bad that we see that we have to look at the bigger picture and look at things differently for the future, but that doesn't mean we just, in the middle, you know, in the middle of everything, stop and say, well, we'll just arbitrarily not use the process right now. This is what it is.
It's going to be inconsistent with what we've done in the past, or it's going to be inconsistent with what we're going to do in the future.
And if I could clarify, in the past, appraisals have been used, I don't know what the numbers are, but I don't, it has not been, there has not been a set process in the past.
So we haven't, okay, so this is, that's not what I understood, so we have no process?
There's no policy.
There's no policy associated with it.
Water resources explained, I know there have been appraisals in the past, but recently we've been looking to tax value.
Okay, which is it? I'm confused. Is it tax value or appraisal?
Maybe perhaps we should bring this back to council.
Can I withdraw my motion so we don't have to vote on what that?
Who is the second?
I would table the item.
So you want to withdraw the motion?
Yeah, I would table.
I will withdraw the motion.
I'll second, I'll withdraw, yeah.
Okay, so motion withdrawn, is there another motion?
Make a motion to table.
Okay.
And I'll second that, and I'll second and say, because there's no, the urgency isn't like this week's urgency with these neighbors. The urgency is, do I renovate my bathroom because I'm not going to be able to get rid of my house and I'm going to have to sell it and the floors warp because the water's come in? If they know that we're moving forward on something, then they're not going to spend thousands of dollars on the bathroom to fix it. You know, they're not going to renovate, fix their houses up, they're not going to land, re-landscape their yard because they think they're stuck, so I think it's just a matter.
Okay. Any other comments? I think there's assurance that we're going to be doing staff recommendation, it's just the dollar amount is. Yep, that's where we're stuck. All right, we have a motion to table indefinitely, not a date on this. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Five to two, anybody else say no?
No.
Four to three. Okay, that is the last of discussion items, we're ready to go into closed session.
Oh, pursuant to GS 143 318, one and three, I move that we hold a closed session to, what are we doing? Oh, to meet with town attorneys and attorneys retained by the town in order to protect the privilege of the attorney-client privilege between the attorneys and the town, and to prevent the disclosure of information that is made privileged or confidential by GS 143 318 10E.
Second. There's a motion, discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous, then we're going into closed session.